Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the order of the City of Tallahassee City Commission Meeting. It is August 21st, Virginia Daley's birthday. My wife, happy birthday Jenny.
It's a significant birthday too, isn't it?
It is, but we're not going to say any numbers out loud. Let me start off by saying yesterday was the primary election day. Commissioner Jack Porter, congratulations on your reelection. Commissioner Curtis Richardson, congratulations on the runoff, and I know you're going to be working hard going into November.
We are.
We have in the audience with us today who's here on a particular issue, but school board member Roseanne Wood, who also won reelection last... Where are you, Roseanne?
I'm a school board member.
Congratulations, and once again, let me take a second to remind everybody that with the general election, please get out and exercise your right to vote. To start us off with the invocation, it is my honor and privilege to introduce a dear friend of mine, of this commission, of the city of Tallahassee, the Reverend Dr. Chris Burney from the Greater St. Mark's Baptist Church. Elder Burney, if you will please come and provide the invocation for us. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll stand.
Oh gracious and eternal Father, we say thank you. We thank you for your many, many, many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We come, oh righteous Father, to ask your blessings upon this meeting tonight. We invite you to be a special guest in this meeting. We pray now, God, for our city. We pray for peace and harmony among all. We pray for our leaders of our community. God, we pray for all individuals that are present tonight. We pray for all of our citizens, oh God, that you would continue to keep your loving arms around the city of Tallahassee. This we ask in your holy name, in Jesus' name we pray that it is all saved, man.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Burney, thank you so much. Are you still serving as moderator, sir?
State president too.
State president, my goodness, and you live right here in our beautiful Tallahassee. Thank you for your leadership within the faith-based community. We certainly do appreciate it.
And don't forget Miracle Hill.
Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox is recognized.
And don't forget that he's also leading the effort for Miracle Hill in our community.
That's right.
Thank you.
That's right. Okay, colleagues, we have a full commission meeting today. We have a public hearing at 6 o'clock where we will also take on agenda speakers and the sharing of ideas. Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
No, sir.
All right, we have no presentations for this evening. We have no announcements before us today. We have no other appearances by other boards, committees, or other governments. We are on the consent agenda. Has any consent agenda item been pulled?
No, sir.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on any consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Okay.
Move consent agenda.
Consent agenda has been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We are now on item 10.01, the Council on Cultural Arts Appointment. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Give me just a second. We got there faster than we usually do. Mayor and Commissioners, we do have two appointments that are before you tonight for action on the Council on Culture and Arts. Kathryn Mayerana and Anna Lam Marcos each have terms expiring on September 30th of this year. Both are eligible and interested in reappointment, so the recommendation is for those two individuals to be reappointed to the COCA Board.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Commissioner Matlow, you're our representative, aren't you, on COCA?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'll move reappointment.
Sounds good. Commissioner Matlow moves reappointment for the recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on 11.01, the introduction of ordinance, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-0-30, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section six of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-0-30 and set the first and only public hearing for October 23rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. A business impact statement concerning this item is available at talgov.com.
Excellent. Just like here, I see, are there any public comment on this item?
Actually, we do have two speakers on 1201, Mayor.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear them, please.
The first is Roseanne Wood, here in chambers. Our microphone is here in the middle of the room. Each speaker will have three minutes, and I'll give you a heads up at two and a half. The second speaker, Mayor, is online, and we'll go there next.
Great. Once again, congratulations on your reelection. I know you're here in a different capacity, but nonetheless, you are one of our esteemed elected officials.
Thank you so much. I'm here today actually representing LeMoyne Chain of Arts Park Festival.
Hold on just a second.
Want me to give my address?
The attorney.
Roseanne, I think we've made a mistake.
The attorney just corrected me. We're on 1101, she's...
I'm 1201.
1201. Yes, that's my mistake.
Our mistake, if you can just take a quick seat, we'll be right with you in just a second. Sorry about that, Roseanne.
Sorry.
That's okay. Do we have any public comment on 1101?
No, sir.
Okay. It is simply read into the record, but if there's a motion to formalize it?
Move.
Second. Properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Any comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Now, we are on item number 12.01. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me tee this up. I'm going to ask Ashley Edwards, our Parks and Rec Director, to actually name all of the events, but this item seeks your approval for the recommendations of the Special Events Committee for a host of events that take place in our community and the services that we provide. The committee goes through the process, they evaluate, and then make a recommendation that serves us very, very well, and that's what we're seeking, your approval of this agenda item tonight. I think it would be beneficial if Ashley, if you could share all of the events, and then there was a subtle detail where the committee recommended almost full funding, but not quite, because they were limited to a pot of dollars, and this recommendation recommends that we fund it in full at 100%. I think we think that's probably best. But Ashley, if you don't mind, give us the details of the events we're talking about.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Commissioners, I also want to take just a moment to introduce, I've got with me tonight Jennifer Carter with our Special Events Staff. She's one of our supervisors, who played an integral role this year with the committee. I want to thank the committee as well for their efforts and their work. Each of you have an appointee, as well as the city manager, the Parks Advisory Board, COCA, and the TDC, and really appreciate all of their efforts. The events that they have recommended and designated to be cosponsored are the Bicentennial Festival, which, that's one of our little wrinkles. It's a one-year-only event, obviously, just for the bicentennial year. The Downtown Concert Series that's put on by the DIA, Experience Asia, the Filipino Festival, the Harambe Festival, the LeMoyne Chain of Arts Festival, Chain of Parks Art Festival, rather, Southern Shakespeare, Springtime Tallahassee, Tallahassee Pride Fest, Word of South, Kid Fest, and the Veterans Day Festival. And the committee is limited by the amount that they can recommend for funding based on the current year's funding, and that amount this year was $247,087, which represented only covering 94.72% of the cost in FY '25, and 97.05% of the cost in FY '26, and that's all they are allowed to recommend. However, given the very small differences and the small amounts there, that's not covered, we are recommending full coverage of the events that the committee designated to be cosponsored. The committee certainly was in support of that as well, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Excellent. Let's go ahead real quick. First of all, any clarification questions before we get to public comment? Ashley, Jennifer, y'all doing an amazing job. The entire team at Parks and Rec does an absolutely amazing job. We thank you so much. I mean, it's one of the crown jewels of Tallahassee is our Parks and Rec Department and our festivals for that much. Ms. Wood, it is now appropriate, and I apologize once again.
It's okay. I'm here as a super volunteer for Chain of Parks and all the other fabulous organizations that you just mentioned. I just want to echo the recommendation. This is what makes Tallahassee Tallahassee, and makes everybody want to live here and enjoy life, and thank you so much in advance for approving this, because I get in trouble at home if y'all don't. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you in my school board capacity this year. It's time for a mayor's meeting that we collaborate and see what we can all do together, so look forward to that. Thank you.
Wait, Roseanne, when do you officially get sworn in as a chair?
I'm already the chair.
No, I mean, when is it over? I'm sorry.
Oh, you're right. Well, when we do our change, which is in November...
Okay. I couldn't remember with the school year how y'all did it.
Yeah, so let's meet before that.
We need to get together before then.
Okay.
I'll reach out and we'll make that happen.
Thank you so much.
Sounds great. Our next public speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all the speakers we have in chambers. We do have one additional speaker online who we are ready to take now.
Hello, thank you for having me. Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, thank you to the Parks and Rec team. I'm Powell K. Crease, representing the Chain of Parks Art Festival, and I want to thank Roseanne for also vouching to get full funding. It might not sound like a lot, but it's very, very meaningful to be able to put on the number-one art festival in Florida and number-seven art festival in the nation, so I really appreciate the support, and I can answer any questions if you have them.
Excellent. Congratulations. The designation just come out once again of the number-one in the state of Florida, is that recent?
It sure did. It was announced last week. We're very excited.
Yeah, that's great. Y'all doing an amazing job.
Fantastic.
Any other public comment?
Not on this item.
Okay. Colleagues, comments, direction?
Move option, staff recommendation, option number one.
Second.
All right. Staff recommendation for option number one has been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Is there any further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Ms. Edwards, while we are on this topic, if you wouldn't mind, can you... I am still in contact with the Southern Shakespeare Festival. For those that remember, out of all the festivals that we have, that was the only festival that took place on the weekend where we had three tornadoes, and it devastated the stage, devastated a lot of their sound equipment, and I know, you know, our standard procedure is we still invoice the whole nine yards. Is there any ability, or what does policy state that allows us in these drastic situations? And as far as I know, they're the only festival that was truly impacted by the three tornadoes, and what's the status of that particular issue?
Mr. Mayor, it is obviously an unprecedented situation. We're in communication with Shakespeare, and I believe that we're going to be able to have some conversation with them and see what we can work out. They did not get charged for any of the time they did not use, obviously, but they had already had several days at the park, and it was just really unfortunate for them, the timing, but we'll be in contact with them and see what we can do.
That's great. That's all we can ask. Thank you. Okay, we're on item number 12.02. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. This item involves the renaming of three separate roads. That would be options one, two, and three in your agenda material. We request that we rename Automotive Way in its entirety to Wiens Road for continuity, as well as the renaming of Professional Park Circle in its entirety to Wellness Way, and finally approve the renaming of Municipal Way in its entirety to Major James Morgan Jr. Way, and I'll make that clarification in the recommendation, and you will remember this was discussed at one of your recent meetings. Our Growth Management Director, John Reddick, is here if you have any questions on the process.
This is an exciting agenda item. Do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my distinguished honor to make this motion primarily, of course, or exclusively for the renaming of Municipal Way for the late Major John Morg... James Morgan, I'm sorry. Major James Morgan Way, and we've got some of his family here, and Ms. Jackie Perkins, who helped to initiate this request, and so I'd make the motion that we accept staff recommendation, item number 12.02, which includes the renaming of Municipal Way in memory and honor of the late Major James Morgan, who had a distinguished career in law enforcement here in the community, and we're recognizing him for that.
Excellent. There's motion by the mayor pro tem. Is there a second to the motion?
I'd second that motion.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Commissioner Williams-Cox, you are recognized.
I'd like to just pile on that this is very worthy, and unfortunately, we couldn't get it done before he left us, but now that we are able to get it done, we're going to get it done, and so that the legacy will continue with his family, which certainly is appreciated. And I also, at some point in the agenda, there is another...
I'll come back to you.
...renaming that I want to mention. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and I would like to add, Ms. Morgan, it's great to have you in the audience with us today, and if the family would please raise and just wave. I would like to recognize one of the younger members in the audience, the Deputy Mayor of the City of Tallahassee. Morgan, stand up and wave real quick.
Mayor.
There you go. All right. All right. I see we got some friends. We'll have to catch up when the meeting's over if y'all are still here, so. Mayor Pro Tem.
I was just... It was just brought to my attention that it should have been, it's not on the... In our information, it should be the Major James Morgan Jr.
James Morgan.
Is that my...
Yeah, they're going to add the junior.
Okay, and the junior will be added.
Yes, and so we are all clear, it is Major James Morgan Jr.
Yes.
Way.
Way.
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
There is a motion on the table by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Commissioner Williams-Cox, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we were dealing with the issue earlier this year about the renaming of one of our renowned citizens here in the city of Tallahassee, and with our new street renaming process, I would like to ask that the city manager be authorized to do whatever is necessary to rename Pasco Street from Orange Avenue to where it dead ends, Behind Bond Elementary School to T-Pain Lane.
T-Pain Lane.
T-Pain Lane. As many of us know, T-Pain spent time going out and attending school at Nims Middle School, so this is Pasco and Orange where Nims Middle School is, and then he's done, has done a lot of work at Walker Ford and spent time there as well, and so this will be, this street will be just west of Walker Ford and Behind Bond Elementary School, and I think that it would be a proud moment for our kids to be able to go up and down T-Pain Lane, because perhaps they will reach the height that he has reached from our community, being able to experience this and being able to look and see where he went. So that is a motion I'd like to make, that we authorize the city manager to do whatever is necessary to make this happen.
Second.
May I make a slight suggestion?
Sure, you.
Just to make sure that we stay with policy, and I am wholeheartedly in favor of this. Let's bring it back for formal ratification at the next meeting as an agenda item.
Okay.
Would love to invite his family to be present when we make the formal vote, and even if T-Pain could join us telephonically or by video, I think that would be wonderful as well.
Absolutely.
So, if you don't mind, can we change the motion to bring back the agenda item for formal ratification at the next meeting?
Absolutely. That we would... The motion is that we authorize city manager to bring back an agenda item to fully ratify the renaming of that portion of Pasco Street that we mentioned to T-Pain Lane.
Excellent.
Second.
Formally motion by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 12.03. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, this item seeks the commission approval for the, to remove five double-faced static billboards in exchange for a single digital variable message sign. This is very much in line with numerous city commission actions to reduce the number of billboards locally and replace them with fewer digital boards. Growth Management Director, John Reddick, is here if you have any questions about this item.
Excellent. John, thanks for your hard work on this item. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, direction, comment?
Move staff recommendation, option number one.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. It is 3:20. I think we're breaking all records here today. This is a good meeting. We're on item number 12.04. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. Let me invite Dr. Kimball Thomas to come forward. He's going to provide an overview. I'll tee this item up, but this is in line with your priority of affordable housing. This particular project, staff has spoken to the developers many, many times, and Dr. Thomas will clarify, but this is about a $50 million project involving nearly 160 units, all of which will be affordable with different tiers of affordability, and you know what I mean when I say that, in terms of the percentage of area median income a household is, and so it meets a lot of the priority directives and discussion that the city commission's had. This particular project is proposed to be located in, on our south side, on Cassimi Street, and we believe it has a lot of potential, and we really welcome the presence of this developer, which is, if I remember correctly, from Nashville into Tallahassee. And so, Dr. Thomas, if you don't mind, will you give us an overview of this particular project and the request?
Dr. Thomas, good to see you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, City Manager Goode, Mayor Daley, respected Commissioners. This particular item, as City Manager Goode has said, we've been working in concert with Elmington Capital Group in Nashville, Tennessee. Let's see, go to my next slide. This particular item... Ooh, here. This particular item, as you can see from the aerial view, is at the corner of Cassimi and Lake Bradford. It's development of about five acres. It proposes 158 units, and what I really want to tell you about this, all these units are affordable according to those being at or below 80% AMI. So they all are affordable. They designated 25% of these units set aside for those at 30 or below percent AMI, and a great another thing about this project from Elmington, they provide a home ownership opportunity program that goes towards the purchase of a home for the residents. So staff has worked diligently with Mr. Shepherd on this, led by my housing manager, Gene Amerson, and staff, we're really excited about this. You can see a rendering of what the new project should look like, and so staff is recommending option one, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have one speaker, John Shepherd.
Okay. Shepherd, you name an address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
John Shepherd, 1030 16th Avenue South, Nashville, Tennessee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to represent Elmington as the lead developer on this project, along with our partners, Tallahassee Housing Authority, and grateful for the proposed support here and the opportunity to work with the Housing and Community Resilience Team, which has been just fantastic to work with. Elmington, we've been in Tallahassee for about five years. This would be our, will be our second project. The other one is also an affordable housing development on Ridge Road. Been involved in development here in this community over that time period. I also have family here, so I'm here for a lot of Thanksgivings and Christmases. I've really enjoyed getting to know this community and have just had a fantastic experience. With this development, that'll bring our total investment in Tallahassee to $133 million, all in affordable housing. We very much value local hiring, you know, local subcontractors, working with, you know, diverse businesses and diverse hiring practices as well, and we make commitments to those goals in the course of each one of these developments. We... Just a little context, sort of why we're here, you know, what we like about Tallahassee, what we feel like we're doing here. One, we appreciate being in a community, and we need to be in a community that has a recognized need for more housing. Obviously, that's first and foremost. That's what we are, we're a provider of housing, and here, there is definitely that recognition. And then a community that just has a clear and consistent vision for where it's headed, which is refreshing, and which frankly is, you know, not universal, and that exists here, and so I just, I congratulate you all and, you know, the environment that you've... That exists here in that regard. And then obviously, the availability of gap funding is really important. This is a $50 million something-dollar project. The funds that are being proposed, which are, you know, very important, represent, I believe it's the seventh source of funding for this project, and it takes... If there were six, the project doesn't work, so, you know, that's the inherent challenge of affordable housing, is how do you pay for it? Often it requires combining a significant number of sources and sort of bringing that all together, so the fact that the city, you know, is willing to provide these resources, has these resources available, makes them available in a predictable, objective, fair way, you know, with a fantastic team at Housing and Community and Resilience is really critical. So we're very glad to be here, look forward to breaking ground on this, hopefully around the end of the year, and bringing this housing online.
Mr. Shepherd, would you lead into the microphone and just state one more time our strong focus and direction? No. Hey, I appreciate your comments, and on behalf of the city, thank you once again for investing in Tallahassee, and you are correct, much like, well, every community in the United States, we have a need for more affordable housing in our community, and we appreciate you staying in Tallahassee and continuing to invest in Tallahassee. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say too how pleased... I live on the south side of Tallahassee, and we're always excited to see new development, particularly in the affordable, the range of affordable housing and the commitment to low-income affordable housing as well, and so, Mr. Shepherd, thank you all and your company for what you do to make that happen for residents here in the city of Tallahassee.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I also want to say thank you as well, and you may have heard that we have something that's called a South Side Action Plan. You're right there in part of that South Side Action Plan, so thank you for coming in and being a part of what we're trying to do in revitalizing and sprucing up and making things equal across all of Tallahassee, so thank you for being one of our partners to help make that happen.
Okay, do we have any other public comment?
No other speakers.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, Mr. Shepherd. Appreciate it. Any final comments? Dr. Thomas?
Move approval of staff recommendation, option number one.
Excellent. It's been properly moved by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 12.0...
Thank you.
Yeah, item number 12.05. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask Airport Director Pollard to come forward. The next two items involve parcels at the airport. He may be available for questions if you have any. This item, twelve oh five, involves the requested sale of property to the Florida Department of Transportation. As you know, they're doing work on Capital Circle, in particular, Capital Circle Southwest, from Spring Hill Road to Carfordville Highway. The city of Tallahassee, specifically the airport department, holds the title to the real estate that DOT needs for their project. City and airport staff have coordinated extensively with DOT on the issue. And as required, we've talked about this before, the property that's held by the airport has to be sold in a particular way to meet federal regulations because oftentimes it's acquired with grant money and federal money, and it has to be at fair market value. In this case, it is. The requested value is eight hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred, I'm sorry, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. And we request that you authorize me or by designee to execute the transaction. David can provide a description of where this is. I think probably would help.
Excellent. Mr. Pollard.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, appointed officials. This item, as the City Manager stated, is setting the stage for that next segment of the Capital Circle project with FDOT. So we've worked with them extensively. We continue to work with them on the existing section and now moving forward to the next project here. So as he stated, this is requesting your concurrence to sell the real estate as reflected here in the green. They'll have a couple of stormwater ponds there across from the T.P. Smith facility. And so we're releasing, proposing to release that land and the associated right of way. As you know, it widens the road in that area there. So it sets the stage for that. And of course, our recommended action is stated in the agenda item, which is to authorize us to adopt the resolution, the two resolutions that are required for the sale of real estate and real property rights from the city of Tallahassee to FDOT, except an allocation into the airports. The funding would go into the airport's capital improvement funds, offered by FDOT in the amount of eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and seven dollars, and authorize the City Manager to execute the necessary documents. So just working collaboratively with our FDOT partners. They've been great to work with, real estate, City Attorney's Office, just a huge effort going on behind the scenes here.
Excellent. Two quick questions related to the airport. How are the summer numbers looking for passengers? How's the economic impact?
So we continue to surpass the 2019 numbers, which has been my benchmark prior to COVID. Very pleased. Back then, I was bragging about 2019 being the highest levels of passenger traffic activity since 2007. So as we continue to look ahead at the numbers that are there, the current numbers, as we have stated. Give me just a second here.
Mayor, I like that David carries around the numbers in his back.
Just keep that in your pocket.
So the latest numbers I've got. Yeah, there's some that make fun of me for this, but that's all right. Because I can't remember everything. But as we closed out June, year over year, fifteen point five seven percent. Okay, so our numbers continue to climb. We continue to focus on the customer. We continue to focus on our projects and all the great things that our staff is doing with your support. And also, it's very important to me, many of you know that these projects are near and dear to me as we continue to move this airport, this community forward, creating economic opportunity and jobs for those in our community. So we're going to keep pressing, and that's what we've been doing. We've been working very hard behind the scenes. With your support, we'll continue to do so.
Excellent. Any other questions for David?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a question, David, to find out what you all are doing to replace JetBlue since they've given us the word that they're going to be leaving the airport.
Sure. So simply said, there's been follow-up conversations with JetBlue. As you know, there's change in leadership at JetBlue. My conversations talked about the new CEO that brought in her new leadership team. So, you know, the conversations we had from back then hit reset, right? And so we're not discouraged by it, quite the opposite as we always do. We are continuing conversations with other carriers. We're going to continue those conversations. We've got other things up our sleeve that we're going to bring to you at a future date. But again, our existing carriers are doing great, right? American in particular is such a success story here, more than one destination, more aircraft size appropriate to our market, right? Because one hundred and sixty seats to Fort Lauderdale is difficult to fill up, right? And so they're always looking at load factor and their performance metrics and everything else. And we're always asking for frequency. The travelers want frequency, right? And so we're always looking for the right aircraft, the right flight crew, the right time of day. And there's got to be a fit as we talk to these carriers. So we're out there representing and selling this every week. We're talking, having conversations about air service development. We've created an air service development team, so we have more people focused on the conversation and the relationships that are required. So be assured, we continue to move the needle there. And we'll be bringing some other things back to you with respect to air service development that we're going to bring to this community here next year, if all goes well. So more to come, more to follow, and we'll keep you updated as we move along.
David, there was an interpretation of the pullout being that the city might have lost money on a financial package or a financial deal. We did not invest any money in that. They saw us as a market, correct? And they brought their, so we were held financially harmless from that point, correct?
Yeah, we did provide them some marketing assistance dollars from the Airport Enterprise Fund that I authorized as I moved forward with the conversations and with the agreements. And also, other than that, no, we're seeing them off to their departure date. We continue to have great conversations, great relationships, and we're going to continue to foster those good relationships that we've got.
Let me back up. When we had air train service in Tallahassee, there was an annual subsidy that was given to the airline. We did not subsidize this airline.
No.
Great. And when they did pull out, Tallahassee was not the only impacted airport. I recall it was also Charlotte, Twin Cities, San Antonio Airport in California, Burbank, California.
Yes. You may realize that, you know, JetBlue had some issues with being profitable, right? And so as the new CEO came in, my understanding and what was described to me was, as she brought in her new leadership team, it was a question of profitable or not. And so they identified a list of markets. It is not untypical for a new entrant carrier. We know that it takes a while to establish the market and all. And so typically, implements will continue to grow with the tenure of the airline in the market and all. So we were just, unfortunately, bad timing with the change and the failure of the merger there.
As they restructure and they're ready to come back, we'll welcome them with open arms?
Absolutely.
Do we have any public comment on the item before us?
No, sir.
Okay. Any further comment, discussion? Commissioner Williams Cox?
I just want to say I love all the new changes that are taking place at the airport, all of the charging ports and comfortable seats and the shops to be able to do some, you know, Dunkin' Donuts is a big one. So I'm really enjoying the new amenities in the airport. And I'm okay with us growing slow. One of my, there's an airport that used to be a comfortable airport. It has gotten so huge that I hate to even plan it. I want to call the name, but you can probably guess. It's not Atlanta, because at least Atlanta has a train you can ride. But this particular one, you've got to run from gate to gate to get to where you're going. And I appreciate not having to do that yet in Tallahassee. So thank you for all the work that you all are doing out there.
Is that a motion for staff recommendation?
It is a motion for staff recommendation.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Protim. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We're on item number twelve point oh six.
Let me just roll right into it. David, if you'll give us a summary of what property this involves.
So very similar story here. This is the authorization of the sale of some property to Blueprint for the Gateway segment there. So this illustrates the segment that we're talking about, a sale amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. This, too, would roll into the airport's capital fund as we continue forward. And we're seeking your approval to release the property, accept the funds, and authorize the City Manager to execute the appropriate documents.
Any questions for Mr. Pollard? Any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move staff recommendation option number one.
Second. Been properly moved by the Mayor Protim, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're on item number twelve point oh seven. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item requests the city commission to adopt a resolution authorizing me or my designee to initiate an eminent domain lawsuit to acquire private property owned by thirty-five twelve McClay Boulevard LLC for the construction of McClay Boulevard and McClay Commerce Drive roadway improvements. This project is in the Market District area and provides for improvements to traffic patterns as well as vehicular and pedestrian safety. To properly design and construct the project, privately owned property and two temporary construction easements located on privately owned property are required. The project represents a valid city public purpose, and it is located within the city limits of Tallahassee, Leon County, Florida. The privately owned property is owned by three five one two McClay Boulevard LLC. And the parties thus far have been unable to negotiate a timely settlement, which is why we're here to request the resolution to initiate eminent domain proceedings if necessary.
How big a parcel of land are we talking?
It's, I don't, it's very small. It's about, it's a driveway.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move staff recommendation option number one.
Second. Been properly moved by the Mayor Protim, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further comment? Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. We've been in contact with the property owners, and we couldn't come to an agreement.
Yes, yes, Commissioner, that's understanding.
And you said a driveway. Does it impact the use of their property at all or any commercial aspects of it?
There's another means of ingress and egress on the private property, so no. But it would impact the ability to build this road.
Okay, thank you. I'll move approval.
We have a motion on table? Good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Do we have any other items to come before the commission today?
No, sir.
Three forty-one. Why don't we go ahead? Is there anybody from the public that wanted to speak on unengaged items at six o'clock? I'm not going to make you wait till then. We have plenty of time. Do we have any unengaged speakers, Mr. Cook?
Mayor, I do have several speakers here that we'll call, but that's a good notice to anyone who has not yet filled out a form. I've got probably, looks like seven or so.
Great. Let's go ahead.
Our first speaker this evening or afternoon will be Harry Brown. Speakers will come to the microphone here in the middle of the room as we had in the first, I guess, item twelve oh one where we had speakers. Three minutes for your remarks. Please provide your name and address. Harry Brown will be followed by Dana Stetson.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Harry Brown, fifty-four thirty-one Crunk Road, Tallahassee. I would like to start by saying, Commissioner Porter, congratulations. Maintain your integrity, and you'll be here as long as you want to be. I'm here to let you know at the last commission meeting, there was a young man that came here speaking on the crime rate in Tallahassee. He stated that the crime rate was double national. But we're never going to do anything with the crime rate as long as we have the people in place that are in there. Chief Revel was placed there wrongly. He shouldn't be there. He was placed there by his very good friend Reese Gold. Reese Gold shouldn't be where he is. He placed favoritism in placing him there. Now, when he was bringing the black chief of police, already offered him the job for one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But Reese Gold took it upon himself. Bring Revel in with two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You know that's wrong. That's white supremacy in every way. How long are we in this city going to accept that kind of behavior? Reese Gold, you need to go. Daley, you need to go. You know, I endured nineteen years and three months of deep racism and bigotry. And after nineteen years and three months, I was run out of City Hall with a gun at my back that was instigated by Tom Coe, another big racist and bigot. This city is never going to change if we don't get the right people placed in these positions. City of Tallahassee, we need to do that. We need to change this leadership. You know, I know some of you have heard of DEI. Tallahassee government doesn't practice it.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay, I think what we practice here is D-I, or D-E-E. D-I-E, diversity and equity and exclusion. I see a lot of exclusion in the city of Tallahassee government. We need to do better. And God sees all this. He knows all this. He's only going to take it just so long. And he'll clean house. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Dana Stetson. Dana Stetson will be followed by Kathy Mayorana.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Dana Stetson, three two one eight Albert Drive. I'm here to talk about the plan to rebuild the Animal Service Center. The Tallahassee Animal Service Center is charged with the responsibility of housing and caring for all animals that fall within its jurisdiction. These people work nonstop to adopt these animals to the public. The total number of the animals coming in has risen over time. Economic conditions, the COVID epidemic and its aftermath, and other conditions such as price inflation have all contributed to this ever increase in flow of animals. All of these conditions have kept the kennels full much of the time recently. The Animal Service Center facilities themselves reflect this wear and tear due to the huge numbers. And this is why we are so grateful to y'all for the shelter rebuilding that will be coming up. The only problem with this plan is, as of today, we have fifty kennels in the shelter, big enough to hold at times two dogs. This plan that you are pushing is causing, is calling for a rebuilding of thirty-seven temporary single dog cages. In other words, many, many less. This is a bad idea because it would involve a huge and sudden increase of the dogs in a short time. And additionally, if the shelter is full, no normal intakes or emergency mass warnings can take place. This issue is a litmus test, the way we treat our animals. We need to pay for a reasonable number of kennels. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Kathy Mayorana, and then Lauren Pearlman.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Catherine Mayorana, thirty-three sixty-one Dry Creek Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for the reappointment to the COCA Counseling Arts and Culture. I appreciate it. It's been a joy to serve for the last three years. Thank you also for the opportunity to speak today. I also happen to be a board member of the City of Tallahassee Animal Services Advisory Council. And I'm here on their behalf or our behalf. I also serve as a volunteer and a foster with Tallahassee Animal Services. As our previous speaker just noted, Tallahassee Animal Services will be going through some renovations, in part due to the funding from Blueprint. And we're thankful for that, and we appreciate the support. One of the things that's going to do, though, it is going to disrupt and cause stress, not only on the animals but the staff, as fifty to sixty animals will need to be housed temporarily, probably for up to nine months elsewhere. And so what I'm asking for today is for your ongoing support for this project and through this project. And what that might look like, well, it could be an experienced project manager to help the shelter during the construction period. It could be additional HR support. The shelter has been down five positions consistently in probably the last eighteen months. It could also be a future ordinance change to move the stray and lost pet hold from six days to three days in order to move animals through the process more quickly. I would also like for all of you to consider coming to the shelter before the renovations start to see the conditions of the shelter and what will happen. And also an opportunity to potentially speak with each of you and your staff members individually so that we can address really the root cause of the overpopulation that we're experiencing. I'll give you one example. We had a fee waived adoption event a few weeks ago, last month. We had twenty-seven dogs adopted in a three-day period, which was wonderful. But we also had forty dogs come in in the same three-day period, a net increase of thirteen dogs. They are really, really out of room, and they are really, really stressed. So anything you can do to support renovations would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next is Lauren Pearlman, and then we'll hear from Kate McFall.
Name and address for the record, please.
Lauren Pearlman, six three four nine Fitz Lane, Tallahassee, Florida, three two three one one. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Thank you also for having me here. And it's nice to see everybody again. Had to dust off my red shirt a little bit to come. Had to dust off my red shirt a little bit to come. I would echo everything that Kathy said. She pretty much said everything that I was going to say. I'd like to say as well, though, that we love our parks, we love our events, we also love our animal shelter that's part of Parks and Recreation, and we appreciate the support from, you know, from Ashley, from Erica, from the staff, from everybody that are, that are working hard. But yes, I think having you come out and take a look at what's going on out there, they are in dire need of, of staff and support, you know, particularly because of the vacancies that they have right now, but also the, the population and what is happening in the community. And several of us are trying to work hard. I volunteer there also three days a week. There are many of us here that do that, aside from other things, and we're just all trying to manage the situation as best we can. But obviously, your leadership would be tremendous as we move forward in this. And the other thing, just to remind you, is this isn't just a city issue, this is county also. The county does also split almost 50% of the funding here, so we hope that you talk to the county, and we will do so as well, to see where they can help. I think communicating to the public is going to be huge, letting them know what's going to be happening at the shelter as soon as possible over the next nine months to a year so that they can help. Maybe they can foster more, they can adopt, they can volunteer, because it is going to be really having to move around a lot differently over these next nine months to a year. So we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Kate McFall, and then Brooke McKnight.
Your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Kate McFall, 1206 Walton Drive. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, great to see everybody. I know that most of y'all have pets or are pet parents, and that's a wonderful thing. So thank you. And we have, as Lauren said, we have so many great animals at the shelter. I just want to plug for one of my favorites. His name is Speck, and he's really special. So hopefully he'll come to the shelter and meet him and so many others. But as you know, the renovations are coming, and that's great, that's good news in general. But I am, one big concern is the dog adoption ward. 50 kennels, many have two dogs. So let's say 60, just to put, throw out a number, 60 spaces for dogs right now in the adoption kennel for this almost year-long event. Nine months is never nine months in construction. I'm not a construction expert, but usually takes a little bit longer, so perhaps almost a year. There are only 36 kennels that are singles only. That's, I mean, that's not tough math, that's pretty easy. I would have much preferred that staff tell the contractor how many kennels they are needed than the other way around. Asking the staff to manage these animal populations with far fewer spaces for dogs is really tough. They have to make tough decisions, and we don't need to make it tougher. And it's certainly heartbreaking for the dogs who don't get a kennel. There will be adoption events and incentives and wonderful support from the City Communications Department, they're fantastic, leading up to the construction, and the staff and the volunteers work really hard to get dogs and cats into loving homes all the time, all year long. But times are really tough in sheltering, not just in Tallahassee, throughout the state, in fact, throughout the country. Intakes are up, and fewer families are looking to adopt medium and large dogs. Though, the current plan does not seem to have taken into account the large number of animals, especially dogs, that the shelter staff handle daily. So my concerns are not only the number of temporary kennels, but also the rushed planning with this massive undertaking. If we don't have a safe, appropriate plan, perhaps a slight delay, hopefully not, but it's a thought. We just want things to be done thoughtfully and properly, because this is going to be great, and we are very grateful and supportive of these renovations. So in summary, I'm asking for more help for animal services. Renovations are a good thing, but not at the expense of the animals that TAS protects. I'd like to see additional temporary kennels on site for housing the rest of the adoptable dogs, additional staff, part-time or full-time, maybe even barred from another department or something to help with cleaning and other duties that the staff is overwhelmed in, in their daily, their daily duties. I also have reached out to the county because it is their responsibility as well, absolutely it is. So I'm in, working on, on them as well. I know we all want to see this done thoughtfully and correctly with the end goal in mind. So hopefully you guys, and as was mentioned before, it'd be great if you'd come to the shelter. I always invite you to the shelter, always want you to come, but the before and after would be kind of fun. So hopefully you will come out and maybe foster, maybe adopt, you know, all of the above. But we, we appreciate it and just want this to be done very thoughtfully and slowly, you know, appropriately. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Brooke McKnight, and then Nikki Rupp.
Your name and address for the record.
Brooke McKnight, 1112 Richardson Road. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here today. My name is Brooke McKnight, and I've called Tallahassee home for 14 years now, and I've been a proud volunteer at our animal shelter for the last five. We have a truly dedicated team of volunteers. We are high school students, not myself, college students, we're working professionals, we're retirees. Our community loves animals, make no mistake about that. We sweat it out in the summer, big time, and we layer up in the winter, but we show up for those animals. My journey into animal welfare and to the shelter specifically actually began across the street. In 2016, Kate McFall, she would bring dogs to meetings of the governor and cabinet, and I'm here to tell you, she got 80 to 90 dogs adopted. And if that's something you guys would be into, we would show up, because it would be amazing to help move some of these great animals. But that's not what I am here today to talk to you about, is the upcoming shelter renovations. Make no mistake, we are thrilled about these renovations. We've been talking about them the last couple of years as we've been gearing up. It undoubtedly is going to have a positive impact on the animals and the shelter's care. These upgrades are much needed. As we move forward, though, it's crucial that we ensure that the shelter can maintain its current operations and continue to support intakes and adoptions during the renovation period, which is currently anticipated to last maybe nine months, could be longer depending. It is vital that the proposed timeline considers the proper care of our community's animals, maintains sufficient staffing at the shelter, and fosters robust community support. Specifically, providing advance notice to the community about the reservation, or excuse me, the renovation timeline is essential. This allows time to encourage in community involvement, onboarding of new volunteers in foster homes, and establishing temporary kennels to replace the 50 kennels that will be unavailable during renovations. We currently have space for 80 adoptable animals. If you ever drive by the shelter, you'll often see that the sign says "more than 130 adoptable dogs." There are times when we have 24 to 26 kennels with more than two dogs. I also want to express my support for our shelter staff. Animal welfare is especially challenging right now and has been for a few years. Adoptions are not keeping pace with shelter intakes, and animals are having longer lengths of stay.
You have about 15 seconds.
Not unique to Tallahassee, it's happening everywhere. They are dedicated and they show up every day. Their task is not easy, they are on the front lines, and they are exhausted. Any additional human resource that you can provide would be greatly appreciated. Last, I also invite you to come out to the shelter. We volunteer every day. Build trips, we do it all. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Nikki Rupp.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Ah, yes. It's Nikki Rupp. My address is 133 North Cut Terrace. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you so much for your time today. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak. I share the sentiments of my volunteer colleagues at Tallahassee Animal Service Center. We're super excited about these shelter renovations. We've needed them for quite some time. The animals are greatly going to benefit from this process, so we are thrilled that this is happening. We do have concerns, we, as everyone has mentioned, we have concerns about the timeline in order to properly prepare. This is going to be a major undertaking, we're going to be losing a lot of kennel space. We have, we have traditionally always had, you know, staffing shortages at the shelter, but we have that right now. So it's kind of the, the perfect storm of unprecedented intakes and staffing issues and, you know, adoptions are, are, in our community have decreased. Owner surrenders have increased. So it's a very intense environment, and we're entering into a very challenging new period. So we would like to ask for everyone's support. Two things that I kind of wanted to touch on is the communication plan. It's going to be really critical that our community understand what is coming and also how important their participation is. And it doesn't have to be, there are so many ways to help in these types of situations. Fostering is going to be a major issue, not an issue, it's, it's going to be a major push and request. And so being able to properly communicate the situation to the public so that we can generate fosters and have staffing at the shelter to be able to process those applications, get these people into the shelter to be able to foster animals, to be able to volunteer, and help shelters, basically be support for shelter staff as they navigate this nine month, nine-month, possibly longer period of time is going to be really critical. So we just wanted to ask for, you know, city and county officials to basically ensure alignment, funding, and then support of shelter operations during the entirety of the renovations. It's also going to be really critical, like I mentioned, to keep the public informed so that we can, we can keep an influx of, you know, foster homes, and also just express the, you know, there's never been a better time to adopt than right now. And so being able to communicate that to, that to the public, you know, we have a lot of ideas and plans in place, you know, incentives and things like that to encourage adoption, but having the city onboard with that support is going to be really critical. And then with staffing, you know, it's, staffing issues, they're happening everywhere, right? We know this. But in this particular situation, literal lives are at stake. So we are just asking, you know, for county and city help to, to get a little bit creative here, maybe tackle some of these issues head-on.
You have about 15 seconds.
And just, just think outside of the box a little bit more. And the more people, the more brains we have working on this, you know, tackling this problem, the better outcome we're going to have for the animals. I appreciate all of your time today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That was the last speaker I have, Mayor.
All right, we, we've got time. Is anybody else here who has not had the opportunity to fill out a card that would like to speak on un-agenda items? Don't have to wait till six? Okay, while we have a little bit of time and we've had the entire summer break, Ms. Edwards, can you kind of come up and give us an update and an overview of the renovation project out at the shelter and address some of the concerns that have been expressed? And then Chief Revel, there was some mention about the crime rate, and I would, first time we've met since the summer as well, I'd love for you to come up and, and talk to us about our trends and what we're looking at as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We too are very excited about the renovation project at the animal shelter. It is going to be a tremendous benefit to the animals and to the staff. There, we're going to be doing renovations to the adoption kennels and some extensive renovations to the vet suite area. It's going to definitely enhance our capabilities as well as the efficiencies that will realize in that area. We're also going to be adding an outdoor shaded and fenced-in play area for dogs that are under quarantine care. The speakers are right, it is going to be a bit of a challenge, and we have been working diligently for months now, talking about how to best mitigate and minimize the impacts to both the animals, our staff, and our customers. It's going to be quite the undertaking. We appreciate the support that we're receiving from you all, from the manager, from our deputy city manager, who is my, my boss. They have been actively engaged with us in this process. I meet on a regular basis with several of the members of our animal advocate groups that you saw speak this evening. We appreciate so much their support and their caring and all that they're doing to help us try to do the best that we can for the animals that are in our care. And I especially appreciate all the comments they've made about our staff. Our staff does a tremendous job out there, and I cannot tell you the challenging circumstances they have to deal with and the challenging things that they have to do to help care for those animals. And I can't thank them enough on behalf of our citizens and the animals that they care for. So I do appreciate all the support. I can tell you that we have had extensive conversations about this. We have a very qualified team in place that's working through this. We're, we're working closely with communications on the marketing efforts that will take place closer to the start of the project later this fall. The comments that folks made were right. We need people to adopt pets, we need people to foster, we need people to come and volunteer. I think it's critical that we have the fewest number of animals as possible in the shelter when we start this effort, and that we can try to maintain those levels. We are, we have maximized the amount of onsite temporary kennels that we can do without having to come in and add extensive additional infrastructure, so we're trying to maximize those efforts onsite. And I think that if we all work together and, as members of the audience have said tonight, work creatively, I think that we're going to be able to accomplish this. It's, it's going to be some discomfort, you know, as we get to the end goal, which is going to be a much improved experience for, most importantly, the animals, but also our, our citizens that come to the shelter and our staff. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have about this.
When, when are we going to begin construction on the?
Scheduled right now to begin towards the end of September, early part of October.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Chief Revel?
Commissioners, good to see you all. As far as crime goes and trends, we are seeing a national increase in crime overall. In Tallahassee, we're doing a really good job of kind of maintaining status quo. Property crimes are up a little bit. We've seen a little bit of a trend lately with some multiple car burglaries in the same area. We've already identified most of who those players are, though, and, and my officers are in the process right now of, of bringing that to an end. Officers are continuing to do just an incredible job. We, we don't really see any trends as far as our violent crime are going. We're making a lot of leeway there. We're actually below last year's pace for, for homicides and for the number of shootings and the people that are injured in those shootings. So those numbers are slightly down, still kind of on our five-year average, but lower. And so the men and women are, are very happy. Thank you for the equipment that you've allowed us to get through grants and through your funding. They are very well supplied with equipment. Morale at the department is extremely high, and, and the officers just continue to do a phenomenal job. So property crimes holding its own, going up just a little, and, and violent crime is, is fairly steady, but down from our five-year average.
Thank you. Congratulations on the new class that was sworn in.
Thank you. Yeah, recruiting is going very well also. Thank you for that.
Wonderful class. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, colleagues, so we've been through un-agenda speakers that are here. Of course, we'll do it again after the public hearing at six. I'm looking to y'all for direction. Do you want to do the sharing of ideas now or wait till we take all un-agenda speakers and do it after the public hearing? I don't want to do it both times, but what, what's the will of the board?
Do it now.
Okay, sounds good. Mayor Proton?
Okay.
Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we may have heard, we lost Mr. Wally Amos recently, and as we, some may or may not know, he was, he grew up in Smoky Hollow, and so it has been, some citizens have reached out to me to talk about what, what can we do to commemorate him and to remember him. And I know, and I've reached out to our local resident historian, Mrs. Altemis Barnes, and she reached out to Blueprint. I think I saw Altemis in the audience. Yeah, and we're, and there seems to be some mention in certain places about him, but I'm hoping that we can look at doing something a little bit more intentional in the Smoky Hollow area that will recognize who he, who he was. And for the young people in the audience, you know, the famous Amos cookies, that was Wally Amos. The, the cookies are still around, but he's gone on to glory. And the very good cookies, too, especially the oatmeal raisins. But nevertheless, I, I would, I would ask that we consider working with either, within the city of Tallahassee or any of our other entities to commemorate Mr. Wally Amos by at least having some type of memorial marker or something to indicate that, you know, where, where he lived and where, where he was is, is, I guess what I would recommend. I also want to say, go Rattlers, go Knolls. Football officially begins this weekend. And go Marauders. Who knew that McClay was going to be going to Ireland to play football? So McClay is in Ireland playing football, Florida State is in Ireland playing football, and fam is going to be in Atlanta this weekend playing football. And so, and as many of you know, we have a new president, an interim president at the helm at Florida A&amp;M, and wanted to give a shout out to Dr. Robinson and the contributions that he's made to this community. I've had a conversation with a staff member about something perhaps that we can do to recognize him. But it's football season, and that's always a good thing. So we all get along during football season. I love that. So let's keep getting along. It's football season.
And, and both games are nationally televised, but the Florida- And, and both games are nationally televised, but the Florida State and the FAMU football game, it's exciting. On point?
Yeah, on point, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner, I just wanted to let you know, I did talk with the city manager about the recognition for Wally Amos in our briefing the other day.
Okay.
The manager, have you all started on that in any way or still need some more time?
Mr. Mayor, no. We're exploring that. I think we certainly understand the, the importance of it and kind of the location of Smoky Hollow. So that, so we're, we're exploring ideas and, and we may have connected with Mrs. Barnes. I've not talked to her yet, but she'll certainly serve as a resource in this effort.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, thank, thank you for everyone from the animal shelter who came out today and all, all the hard work you do. I adopted my dog Betty about seven years ago from there. She's a sweetheart. We still love her. I, I did want to get clarification, and I'm happy to come out and, and visit and, and see where things are now, but Ms. Edwards spoke. It seems like the issue of having enough temporary kennels is at its hard line of where we can go. And we mentioned a communications plan forthcoming, but it also seemed like the timeline of development was going to start really soon. So can we get an update just on, are, are we blitzing it very soon, getting foster in place in advance before this deadline hits? Or are we, is it kind of up in the air? Because I think there's a lot of anxiety just based on the timeline, the impending start of construction, and what, what's actually going to happen when these, these animals start coming in?
Update right now or?
Or, no, yeah, it doesn't have to be now. The next meeting, we're just, an email update even, just, just to let us know that we can share information while we, we visit. And if we can be helpful in letting the public know that, that the severe need for fosters during this time, we're happy to use our resources as well to, to push that message. But second, I was reached out. I think it's too late for this year, but August 31st is International Overdose Awareness Day. And I'd like to recognize that, and we'll do it through our office, but maybe more officially next year. 117,361 deaths just in Florida in the first six months of, of 2023. I think it's a huge issue. We know people in our community who have lost loved ones who are facing this, and it's good for the family and also to bring attention to the use of things like Narcan that can, can save lives in these situations.
Commissioner Matlow, is there a specific event taking place? I mean, we won't be in chambers, but is there something on the 31st that we, that, if you're planning on participating in?
There, there's not an actual event. So the, the request was us that, how, how can the city recognize it? I explained it, short timeline, you know, we'll, we'll put something out and recognize it, but I'll, I'll keep you updated. They said this year or next year. They, they just wanted, it was a really touching experience and just wanted to make sure. And we can collaborate on next year. I think that would be great to have an event. Thirdly, so over the summer, Mr. Manager, we heard a lot of concern from Canopy neighbors on the Circle K. Is that, that's something, do you have an update on that? I don't believe, I don't know if that's something that's coming before us. I know there was a signed variance request.
Mr. Mayor, I want to ask John Reddick. He's most informed about the status of that. He's met with numerous neighbors. In fact, I think he joined Commissioner Richardson when you met with them, Commissioner. To give them an update, I think they appreciated that. That's probably, if we can share that kind of thumbnail here, John, would be helpful.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. And as the city manager said, it's a brief update from what we've had previously. We had a very productive meeting last month with 30 neighbors. Commissioner Richardson, that was a, in, in these chambers, it was, it was a very productive meeting of just explaining where it's at in process, which to that, to that end is, they've started their first step, the site plan review process, but have not received that, that approval yet. And that has been ongoing, you know, essentially waiting for them to decide whether or not they're going to move forward since November of last year. So there's, there's nothing new to report, and I understand our office and growth management has also received some inquiries from some of the neighbors who, who were able to attend that meeting, and we've provided that information to them as well, of just how to stay informed. And a lot of that's us direct, you know, we, we have all their information to be able to tell them directly when we have an update, but also just in general, how to stay engaged of permitting activity and things of that nature that are going on. So it's a long-winded way to say, we, we don't have any update from when this has last been brought up as a note of concern, but we are directly communicating when we have that information.
On point?
Yeah, on point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And then I'm coming back to Commissioner Matt.
I, I just wanted to echo John's comments. I think we had about 12, 15 people from the neighborhood that attended that meeting here in the chambers, and, and it was, it was, it was very informative. John and his staff, I think Karen was there, did an excellent job of explaining to them what the process is, how, how and when they can be involved in the process. And, and, and John answered all of the questions that they had at that point. And when they left, I think they were very satisfied that we had met in that fashion, and they were able to get their, their questions answered. I don't know that they were satisfied, but they, they were appreciative of the fact that we were willing to meet with them and, and bring all of the staff. They thought it was just going to be me there and not be able to answer any of their questions, but I think we had three or four staff members there, and they were able to get all of their questions answered at that point. So it made a difference for them. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that, that update. You know, I, I, I continue, I share their concerns, you know, when Canopy was presented as a master planned community, town centers and that sort of thing, and people are essentially blindsided by Circle K in their backyard. I don't think that's what anybody envisioned coming for the development. I'm not sure what's allowed or, or what, what was approved prior and, and what recourse we actually have, but I do think we have a duty, you know, particularly when new developments are coming online, to make sure residents are aware exactly what can come to their neighborhood. Thank you. My, my last item, we, we have been, we were not able to secure a agreed-upon contract for the firefighters in October 2023 of last year, nearly 10 months ago. I think we just came to a conclusion on the final bargaining this morning, but, but in effect, out of a 12-month contract, 10 months of the contract have already passed. So for 10 months, members of our fire department did not receive a raise that every other city employee did. And I understand it, it went through the process, but I know historically, we've had contracts that weren't signed by October of the fiscal year, and we made the pay retroactive to make sure, you know, the good men and women who work for us are, are made whole. I don't think the contract negotiations are a fault of their own. So I, I'd like to make a motion that we ask, we direct the city manager to ask the union to look at making an amendment to those contracts to make them retroactive to October 2023.
Okay, let me recognize the motion first. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Now let me come to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, Mayor and commissioners, the, the statute that governs the collective bargaining and especially the impasse process is 447-403 is the resolution of impasse. We spoke about it this morning. It, it very clearly, it makes it very clear that the process that we have gone through is final. There, and the, there's statute, there's case law interpretation after that law was passed. There really is no means for going back into the contract to amend it after today's hearing. It really is meant to be final.
Historically, we've taken votes to amend contracts and add additional benefits. What makes this one different?
I'm not sure that we have in the last, I'm not aware in the last two decades that we got to the actual point that we got to today, which is, we went to impasse, we went to special magistrate, we had a rejection of the special magistrate's order, and then we had what, this morning, I think the, maybe the best way to refer to it is an impasse resolution public hearing. And in the statute, that's where the, the sort of notion of finality, the one that defines what the process that we went through this morning. So I'm just not aware of any legal authority at this point in the process for going back in and making any amendments.
Would it be legal to make an amendment to go back and?
I believe it would violate the law, yes.
Okay. Well, I'll make a, I'll withdraw that, and I'll make a second recommendation that as we approach the three-year contract, we direct the city manager to offer a one-time payment to all members to make up for the loss of pay in the last one year.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I am not going to respectfully vote in favor of the motion until we actually get into the part of negotiations. I don't think it's appropriate outside of those negotiations to start dictating parameters that guide us through the negotiations. I see where you're going. It's an interesting idea, but I just don't think it's prudent to do it.
Right.
Right now at the city commission. Any other comments? I'm coming back to you, Commissioner Matlow. All right, Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and I understand your concern. I think what we're looking to do is, is correct a wrong that took place in, in the, the last contract. And I, I will also say, the city manager, negotiations are already underway. The city manager has a responsibility to represent at the bargaining table his best understanding of the will of the elected legislative body. That's us, so I think this will give clear direction for where the legislative body stands, that they actually do want to see our men and women of the fire department made whole from the contract negotiations of last year.
All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails three to two. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioner Williams-Cox in dissent. Commissioner Matlow, you still have the floor.
That's all for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank all the volunteers and representatives of our animal services for coming. I adopted my two kitties from the shelter, and I foster. So I'm a big animal lover and appreciate so much what you do and have corresponded with some of you about how my office and the city can be helpful. So I definitely, and I appreciate the update from Ms. Edwards, and want to be kept in the loop as much as possible with as detail-oriented as possible about what our communications plan is and what options we have, because I, I hear about it from the community and volunteers. I know we're at a crisis point. So anything we can do to be creative, I'll see if I can come up with any ideas, but I would like to have another discussion about this for sure and look forward to, to that update. My only other item is whether we gave, we gave direction a few months ago that with the renaming of Wanish Way, that we as a city do something to honor Mr. Wanish for his service to our community. And, and I was wondering if, Mr. Manager, if you had an update on this?
Mr. Manager, where are we in that process?
I don't have an update tonight. I'd be happy to get one, and I can email the commission if that's acceptable.
Please.
Thank you. That's it for me.
I join Commissioner Porter in interest in the Wanish Way issue, making sure that we do honor the Wanish family. I only have a couple of things. Number one, welcome back. To me, this kind of signifies the beginning of fall, right? Where it was summer, school's back in, commission's back in, and we've had a great summer as a community. Want to encourage everyone, let's be patient out on the roads. The college students are back, K-12's back in school, and let's just be aware, we have a lot of pedestrians out there. Let's be safe and let's be courteous to one another. I too look forward to coming out to the Animal Services Center, and if y'all wouldn't mind sticking around so that we can schedule something, that would be great. I've got a day in mind. Finally, I've got a challenge for staff. You know, there was one Olympian from Tallahassee who won a gold medal. And Lily Williams in cycling is from Charles High School after the Olympics. I actually tried to reach out to her, never made contact, but we cannot let this moment go by that we have Tallahasseean who is a gold medalist representing the United States of America. Now, I also understand that we have several members of the FSU Women's National Championship Soccer Team that represented their countries and the United States as well, winning gold medals, but we, we cannot let this opportunity go by. Now, it's my understanding Ms. Williams doesn't live in Tallahassee anymore, but somehow in the next meeting or two meetings, I would love to be able for us to honor her and have her, if she cannot be here, and if her family can come in and maybe she can participate by video conference, it is very important to me and I think to this community that we properly recognize our Tallahassee citizen who did, in fact, win a gold medal representing the United States of America. Very, very, very exciting. With that, it is 4:25. We will go ahead and adjourn. We will be back at 6 o'clock for the public hearing. We have just a couple-ish, three issues, and then, of course, anyone who shows up at 6 o'clock for unengaged speakers, we will hear them as well. We stand adjourned. It's 8 o'clock on Wednesday, August 21st. I'd like to call to order the public hearing. We have three items that are on the agenda this evening. So ladies and gentlemen, we'll get started with 14.01. Madam Attorney or Mr. Manager, who's, who's taking the lead?
I'll do it.
Okay, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 14.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-Z-24. An ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on 2.68 acres located at 3055 Elmwood Road as and in the City of Tallahassee Residential Preservation One, RP One, from Leon County Residential Preservation RP on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City of, City Commission, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-Z-24. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
All right, Ms. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, I do not. We have any speakers on item 1401? Nope, no speakers.
Okay, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation?
Second.
Been promptly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 14.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 14.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-Z-28AA. An ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee located on 109.36 acres on the south side of Capital Circle Southeast, CCSE, approximately 2,870 feet east of Woodville Highway on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, changing the zoning classification of land from Critical Planning Area, CPA, to Charlie Ward Champions Ranch Planned Unit Development, PUD, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-Z-28AA. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
All right, Ms. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
The only speaker we have, Mayor is Robert Volpe, who's here to answer questions if you have them.
Okay, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation?
Second.
Been promptly moved by, by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. 14.03, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 14.03 is the first of two public hearings for the Florida A&amp;M University Campus Development Agreement. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first of two public hearings on today, August 21st, 2024, and schedule the second and final public hearing for September 25, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission's chambers, chambers at City Hall.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues.
Move staff recommendation, option number one, Mr. Mayor.
Been promptly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim. Seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 5-0. Do we have any other items coming before set the public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay, we have done the sharing of ideas amongst commissioners, but we do have a host of folks that are here on unengaged items. Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
Mayor, at this time, I have a dozen speakers.
Okay, let's begin. Thanks, everybody, for coming out.
First speaker is Elizabeth Wills. She'll be followed by Lauren Schuler. Elizabeth Wills. Lauren Schuler is our first speaker, to be followed by Elizabeth Wills. Speakers will come to the microphone there in the center of the room. Each speaker will have three minutes for remarks. There's a light in front of the mayor that will be green, but it will turn yellow at 2 and 1/2, and I'll give you a heads up as well, and then it'll turn red at 3, if you give your name and address for the record.
I'm Lauren Schuler, and I live at 2428 Sweet Valley Heights in Tallahassee. So I'm, you guys may recognize me. I came last time when I spoke. I've sent a couple of emails and spoken to a few of you guys. I'm just here again because of the proposed construction of the Circle K on the corner of Wilani and Dempsey-Mayo. I spoke with you at length last time about the fact that, I am concerned about the fact that they have a gas station uphill directly in my backyard. This was not something that was relayed to us whenever we purchased the home. We were told that there was nothing that was going to be put into that spot that would affect our home value or quality of life in any way. Obviously, any of you probably feel that a gas station in your backyard would reduce your quality of life. It would significantly increase any health hazards that you're being exposed to on a daily basis that you can't avoid because you live there. Your children play in those, that backyard. You walk to the mailbox right next to it. So I just, I'm here again, I don't need to reiterate all the points I've already made. I'm here because I'm still going to continue to fight this, and I need you to know that I'm still not happy about this, and I still want the city to do something. And I have many of my neighbors here who are going to speak out about this very same proposed construction. And again, I'm just here to make sure that you know that I'm still here, I'm still very upset about this, I'm still voting based off of this. Okay? Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you. Before we keep going, how many of y'all are here on this particular issue? Okay, good. So earlier today, Mr. Reddick gave us an update on the meeting that took place, which is great. John, since we have such, not, we're gonna hear from everybody first, but you know, after we hear from the neighborhood, and I need you to come back up, let's go into a little bit more detail. I want to know where they are in the process, and more specifically, from a legal standpoint, what role this commission will have in this development, what influence we have, the whole nine yards, where are they, so that we're all on the same page, okay? Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
The next speaker is Elizabeth Wills, and then Karen Bradley.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Wills. I reside at 2429 Sweet Meadow Vista, and like my neighbors, I'm also speaking out against the proposed Circle K in Canopy. There are considerable environmental safety and quality of life concerns. This not only affects those in Canopy, but any future homeowners that are considering purchasing a home with a developer such as Premier. We were sold the ideal of green living and an improved quality of life, not only for myself and my husband, but our children and my grandmother who lives with us as well. Placing this establishment next to our neighborhood and in between us and the upcoming senior center is not a wise or safe decision, in my opinion. I humbly ask for your support in preventing this situation from becoming realized. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next is Karen Bradley, followed by Rhonda Alston.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Karen Bradley. I live at 2777 Sweet Ridge Street in Tallahassee, in Canopy. I live in the first unit, and so I've been there six years, just a little over six years. I, we were all sold a bill of goods. Let's just start right there. Those of us in unit one have been promised things over and over again through the years, and it only took four years to get the pool there, like they said there would be in the first year that we were there. We had been constantly misinformed, lied to by the developer. I'm sorry, but that's just what it is. And we have been told many, many times about all these wonderful things that were going to happen, and this town center was going to be, oh, this paradise, Mayberry type of lifestyle that we'll have at our, at our disposal. And of course, it's not going to be that at all with a Circle K there. I don't know. I think it was very unethical for him to choose to put a Circle K there when immediately straight down Wilani is another Circle K. Why do we need another Circle K in our neighborhood, like she previously stated, with all of those houses there with the lights on 24/7? That's, that's just despicable, among other things. And just to remind you of the article that was in, the Democrat, probably a month, a month and a half ago, that listed about all the crimes at different gas stations and everything, with the exception of one, they were all at Circle K's. Murders, deaths, fights, police called every single time, and that's going to be in our neighborhood if we don't put a stop to it. That is, we don't want that in our neighborhood, like she said before, you do want that in your neighborhood. The excuse that we were given was that, oh, there's one in Kalarne. No, that was there before the houses were there, not what we have right now. And so we don't want that in our neighborhood, and everybody's, to go along with all of what they're saying about the environmental problems, true. I mean, there's, there's houses 60 feet right behind what's going to be that, the back of that gas station. That's, that's, that's not, not tenable. It just shouldn't be there.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
And I'm done.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Rhonda Alston, and then Tito Leaden.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Alston. I live at 2828 Sunset Peak Drive in the community known as Canopy. I'm a homeowner there, and as such, I am adamantly opposed to the plan to build a Circle K gas station on the corner of Wilani Boulevard and Dempsey-Mayo. A facility of this nature within our community and adjacent to a residential area will result in light pollution, noise for the homeowners, a negative environmental impact, traffic issues, and potential criminal activity. When purchasing homes in Canopy, we were promised by Premier Fine Homes, owned by the Asbury and Gazvini families. Walkable trails, a town center with such establishments as restaurants, coffee shop, boutique, there was never any mention or indication of a gas station, which will undoubtedly devalue our properties and which is being developed by the same owners as Premier Fine Homes, the Gazvini family. Mr. Gazvini claims no other business this will come to the proposed town center without a draw. The gas station is far from a so-called draw. People drive in, get their gas, and drive out. Research shows there are many franchises that are much more appropriate and historically more successful than a gas station in a small town setting such as a town center. You could open an ice cream shop, a Starbucks, that kind of a business tomorrow at that site, and have the hundreds of homeowners of Canopy and the apartment residents from Arbor anxious to frequent that establishment, and therefore be strolling through the town center. There are already three gas stations within a two-mile radius of Canopy, each of these being on main roads, not in the middle of a residential community. Have the city engineers researched the many published studies regarding the negative impact on the environment, groundwater, air quality? I cannot understand how the city's planning committee would or could issue a conditional approval for this facility without taking these details into consideration. I ask any person sitting on the city commission or the city planning committee, would you want this in your backyard? Would you want the bright lights shining in your bedroom windows all night long? Would you want the noise, exhaust fumes, and odors permeating your backyard while your kids are trying to enjoy your swimming pool?
You have 20 seconds.
Or a family barbecue? Several of my Canopy neighbors are prepared to share with you the many scientific studies published regarding the negative impact gas stations present to the surrounding area. This is critical information for the city commissioners to hear, but we beg you, not only hear, but listen to. Listen carefully.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Tito Leaden, and then Tara Williams.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Tito Leaden, and my address is exempt. So I'm here on behalf of, well, supporting the GAC for their demands to restore the Civilian Police Review Board, no more money for that Tallahassee Police Station Headquarters, $135 million, and a justice and retrial for Calvin Riley. And you know, speaking of what they're talking about, you know, with building things that people clearly don't want, I've seen this a few times come into the city commission meetings, you know? Like, community members come here and they don't want y'all to like, you know, advise, like, you know, approve building something somewhere or build something somewhere, and it happens anyway, right? And I, it's the same thing with this police station, you know? There's no transparency going on with this police station, it has absorbed and budgeted. It was like, what, $30 million, and now it's $135 million? It's, who, who wants this? Who wants this? And why are the, why are the police being rewarded? You know? They, they always do things, like the Calvin Riley case, where, you know, they plant evidence and they don't hold their police officers accountable, and they just keep getting rewarded, you know? And I understand that, you know, a part of that is because some members of the city commission, you know, buddy-buddy with the Police Polaven Association, but then some of them like, you know, come second in their elections. But, yeah, I don't know. I don't know. You just, we need more transparency for the police station, and the police station doesn't need to be built. You know, I know the whole hype about it is like, oh, wow, it has a bunch of community features about it. What, all, everybody could come and use the police station for various things, but you don't need to attach that to the police station. The police have a bunch of money already, the police get a bunch of things already, they don't need a building and a community center and all of that. You could just use it, you know, for things that people actually want, things that people would actually vote for. I don't think many regular community members are like, wow, we really want a $135 million police station? That's what I would want.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. And, yeah, I didn't have that much, that much else to say, you know, other than, again, we don't need a $135 million police station, you know? I, I'm disgusted. I'm disgusted, but, yeah, have a good day.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Tara Williams, and then Jeff Crawley will follow.
Tara Williams, our address that we pay a mortgage at is 2832 Chumlee Circle. Good evening. On April 11th, our house flooded with sewage and became uninhabitable due to the city's lack of maintenance on their system and the city's lift stations not having generators. And after being denied over and over on May 8th, we spoke to you all. We're, we explained that every part of our house was covered in raw sewage. On May 17th, the city finally accepted responsibility, and many assured, people assured us that would, that you would do the right thing. We submitted everything we were asked for as soon as we were asked. The city waited until August 12th to respond to our claim and to tell us, make it very clear that they were unwilling to pay what they needed to to make our house whole. So our two children had to start school in the same situation we ended in, not knowing what will happen next. We have not been able to live in our house since April 11th for 37% of this year. We do not have any of our things, 130 days, and are still putting out thousands of dollars of extra money monthly just to live. All we want is to go home to a house that is safe for our family. I ask you what you would do. What would you want for your family? Would you want your children to return to an unsafe home? Would you want to have to use the same bathtubs and sinks and appliances that were covered in raw sewage? Would you be able to cover hundreds of thousands of dollars to make up what the city is refusing to pay by not dealing in good faith, by throwing statues at us that do not apply and ignoring the plain language of those that do? As a teacher of 18 years, I have put my heart and soul into this community. My husband and I chose to stay in Tallahassee, and this is how we are being treated by the city. We work so hard for, we deserve better, and so does everyone else that is in the same situation. We are asking you to do the right thing in good faith, look at all the ways to pay for our house to be put back together so we can go home safely and whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, what, what is the status on this? I, they have been before us since April. We have accepted responsibility. We should be processing this. Why, why have we not been able to bring this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I haven't seen the correspondence of just the last couple of days in details, but in general, we have worked hoping we could reach an appropriate agreement. At this point, I believe the city's offer is at or, or is at $200,000, which is a, a reference was made to statute. State statute provides a cap on the amount that local jurisdiction like ours can pay, so effectively, we have offered the maximum allowed by law.
Understood. There seems to be some, some misunderstanding between the parties. So what I'd like to ask, Madam Attorney, I need you to weigh in. I need a written opinion for them, so that if they then disagree with the formal written opinion of the city attorney, then I advise you to seek counsel, but we need to expedite this and get it done. If it's not done, I want the agenda item to come back at the next meeting so that this board can take action. But, look, we've accepted responsibility for the claim. It has been since April. We need to take care of business on this. It, it, I understand where you're coming from with the state statute. I understand claims bills in the legislature. I understand, Madam Attorney, that they need a little bit more clarification from your office as well, but I would really love to see this be brought into the limelight, okay?
Understood.
Any, any other comments or questions on this particular item?
I agree. I was just saying, I agree.
Yeah, oh, I absolutely agree as well, but I was just wondering if, if they have, if you all have a, an estimate of what the...
They have it all. They do.
Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams, I need you to come back up to the microphone, if you don't mind.
Estimate is $363,000 to fix everything, per the state statute that they are referring. The event would be that our house was flooded. It has nothing to do with everyone else's. It also says that they can pay up to $300,000 per person. We have four people that live in our home, so there is discrepancy. We have had lots of people that have weighed in on the discrepancies, so we are actually rather clear on what it says. We were also told that the city can also ask for special claims so that they can offer us more, and we also find it hard to believe that there's not some other way to look at this in order to make our house whole. That is our, what we are having a very difficult time with, in the fact that this is, like you said, we have been sitting on this since April and are getting nothing, and then sat on it for three months. We submitted our estimate fully May 20th, and we did not get a reply until I started back to work on August 12th, is when I got the phone call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you all have an attorney?
Not yet, no, ma'am.
Commissioner Mattler?
We are trying very hard not to do that.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I disagree with your, your assessment. I think last we spoke, I thought we were moving towards resolution. Months ago, this is the first I heard that we haven't, we aren't moving in that direction, so I'd also like to see how we can bring this to a close.
Yeah, and, Mr. Mayor, I, I would certainly like to see them made whole if in any way possible. I mean, this is, I...
Thank you.
I, this is just unbelievable.
We agree, and from what we know, we're not the only ones that this happened to.
Yeah, yeah, but I'd like to see them made whole as quickly as possible.
There were several instant, instant, instances that we're dealing with.
Absolutely.
Your particular case, though, is pretty clear.
Correct.
And we have gotten over the, the burden of proof in your particular issue. That's why it is, I think, very important to bring this into the limelight. So, on a happy note, welcome back to school. You're a great teacher. You have a lot of mutual friends that say a lot of great things about you. And keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you wouldn't mind hanging out, as soon as the meeting's over, Madam Attorney, Jim, y'all could spend, schedule some time where we can, y'all can get it together and y'all could spend, schedule some time where we can, y'all can get it together and figure out how to bring this in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jeff Crawley. Jeff Crawley followed by Dylan Warford.
Thank you. You name an address for the record, please.
Jeffrey Crawley, 3865 Broadmoor Lane in the Canopy. Mayor, thank you for your time today. Council members, I appreciate your time as well. I don't, I'm not very political, so to speak. I don't really get involved in politics or governmental actions. I'm usually too busy with my personal life and my job. But I felt it was worth my time today to come and address you about a gas station in Canopy. This is a tremendous mistake, and I, and I want to share this with you. Now, I'm well aware that some of you want to grow Tallahassee, and rightfully so. We do need to grow the city in the right direction. However, we do not need a gas station 59 feet from the back door of people's houses. There's going to be light pollution. There's going to be air pollution. There's going to be noise pollution. And we're talking not just one or two houses, we're talking several. This planned gas station sits on top of a hill, and below at the bottom of the hill is Dove Pond. Now, there's going to be a problem. There's going to be a gas spill there. Mark my words, there will be a gas spill. And it will run down, and it will contaminate people's yards. It will contaminate Dove Pond. And as we know right now, Dove Pond is overflowing because of development, and we can't even use Mikkasuki Trail anymore because it's covered in water and mud. Okay? Not only is this bad for just us that live there, it's bad for all of us. We all use Mikkasuki Trail. We love the trees here. It's beautiful. We're blessed to be here. But I need, please, please, think individually. Think about yourself and your families. Don't just think on your own. I've been on boards. It's so easy to be a herd mentality and to go along with the crowd or go along with whoever the boss is. I'm asking you to be independent thinkers. Think about what you want. I'm an independent voter. We will vote for whoever protects our best interests. As a matter of fact, I'd be happy to volunteer as someone who probably you wouldn't vote for president, but I would. But I'd be happy to help you. I'd be happy to volunteer my time if you are on the same page as me. I, and I mean that sincerely. I mean it sincerely. We may not be on the politics side of the aisle, but I'll be on your side if you help me out with this. And I guess I'll leave it with this. Couple things. Benzene is a big issue with gasoline. It causes cancer. So every time we smell that gas or we get, touch that gas, we're exposed to cancer. And I ask you again, please reconsider this. And I'll leave you with a Bible verse that Coach Norvell said last night to me. I'm a proud Florida State Seminole. I'm very active in the community, and I'm very proud of a lot of folks that I know here. But I'd like to leave you with this Bible verse that Coach Norvell said. He says, it's regarding independent thinking, please. It says, "Enter through the narrow gate, for wide is the gate and broad is the road that leads to destruction, and many enter through that. But the small gate, the narrow road, that leads to life, and only a few people find it." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I've got some speakers I need you to help us keep, stay on time. I let him finish his thought because we didn't give notification.
Dylan Warford is next speaker, followed by Lori Dury.
Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Dylan Warford, 405 West College Avenue. First off, I want to say we want justice and a retrial for Calvin Riley. We've seen videos, they've made national news of police misconduct here in Tallahassee, and he deserves justice. And relating to that, believe that you should support a citizen police review board for any, any power that's going to be delegated to oversee our community. I think the community should have some sort of, you know, there should be some checks and balances. The community should have a say in how they're policed and how that looks. And also related to that, again, the Tallahassee Police Headquarters, $135 million. Before, it was much lower, and then it keeps going up, going up, going up, going up. $135 million is a lot of money. That's a lot of capital for just a new building that's not even actually addressing the needs that the community has. Basically, like, if you go to a doctor and you've got, oh, okay, I'm, I've got breathing issues. Oh, I smoke, sedentary lifestyle, my diet's bad. And the doctor's like, okay, uh, let me, let me give you some Advil. So you're not just, you're not addressing the actual issues that cause the problem, but also you're prescribing a very inadequate solution. Because, so I've taught before, there's kids that need their, after COVID and even before, there's, they need help. Schools aren't funded enough. Kids don't have, you know, it seems like kids are having less and less options. And if we're talking about crime, how are kids going to have a way out if we can't even help them out from the beginning of their life? Why, like, I don't understand what we're doing. Like, it seems like, there's like a, like, if you just listen to everyone talking, it's just so many issues that we're not addressing. Like, people don't want things built. People's houses are getting destroyed, and it's been months and they're still not being taken care of. And then we're worried about building, using $135 million as of now. Seems like, I don't know, at this rate, it seems it's going to keep getting higher and higher. And we're just trying to solve an issue, but it's not really the issue. The issue is, you know, we need better schooling, we need better extracurriculars for kids, we need to give them more help. We need to help out families. I work with people who are working, like, two jobs. So why are they working two jobs and still struggling? People can't take care of their kids as much because they're struggling. They're not getting what they need at school. They're not getting what they need after school. Who, we need to take care of our youth, take care of our community and not just, you know, keep just, count time just to the police, the police. Let's, okay, let's give them more money. Oh, okay, the tax property revenue increased this percent. It's got, the police rev, the police budget's got to increase that percent too, basically.
You're at 30 seconds remaining.
That, I think it just doesn't make any sense, and it seems like just really not caring about the community, and it's just really mind-boggling. And, uh, yeah, so I really believe you should invest in the community. Stop investing in police, invest in the actual problems that are causing what, whatever perceived problems you see. If you see it's crime, there are definitely other issues you should tackle to, you know, prevent crime, all that sort of stuff, you know? Actually invest in community, invest in your youth, invest in actual working people.
Our next speaker, please.
Laura Dury, then Kevin Ogle.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Laura Dury. I live at 3844 Ardmore Lane. I have a signed petition with over 200 signatures, and we are gathering signatures regularly in oppose, opposition of the Circle K being built in our neighborhood. I would like to share this with you. I would also like to share with you our concerns with the environmental risks with the gas station being built. There's going to be many more speakers, and many have already stated their concerns, so I would just like to pass this on.
If you'll provide this to the author.
Attorney, are they? Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Kevin Ogle, then Dot Enman Johnson.
Name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Ogle, 3804 Ardmore Lane, Tallahassee. Good evening. Bottom line up front, I'm asking you to change what appears to be a generalized permitted use list used with planned unit developments. I speak today in opposition of the proposed Circle K at the corner of Willani Boulevard and Dempsey-Mayo Road. The proposed site is in close proximity to many homes, and it's possible because the location was approved for one of any one of 44-ish uses as detailed in the Canopy Planned Unit Development. After meeting with members of the commission and city officers, I understand that there's nothing we can do to reverse the issued provisional approval. However, I'm here today to ask the commission to review how permitted uses are determined. In the Canopy PUD, both the Employment Center and the Town Center designated areas are approved for 44 possible uses. The only difference between the two is that the Employment Center may have a mini storage facility, and the Town Center has authorized a gas station. It does not appear that any care or consideration is given to how close these areas are to what in 2011 were proposed home sites when the PUD was originally approved, including multifamily home units, multifamily units, inclusive housing, and then general singled family dwellings. I found it interesting that both lists also included repair services, non-automotive. This indicates that automotive repair facilities pose an issue not found in any other or many other types of businesses. That makes sense to me. In fact, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection seems to agree and even has a detailed waste management guide for auto repair shops. I find it odd that gas stations and, hadn't mentioned previously, but dry cleaners are included on the seeming, seemingly nonchalant list for unit developments. Both are known as common sources of contamination that can have severe harmful effects on employees and residents. I checked the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Contamination Locator Map yesterday, 20 August 2024, at 14:20 hours Eastern Daylight Time, and found 27 active cleanup sites within two miles of the proposed Circle K at Willani and Dempsey-Mayo. I had to limit to two miles because otherwise the number was astronomical. Seven of these are dry cleaners and 14 were gas stations, including the Circle K's at 3510 Thomasville Road, 1401 North Monroe Street, 1990 Capital Circle Northeast, 1848 Capital Circle Northeast, and 3424 Thomasville Road. It appears that the Florida Department of Environmental Protection is aware of the threat posed by and special hand and required at these facilities. I ask you to change how provisional use approval is allocated.
You have 30 seconds left.
Do businesses such as dry cleaners and gas stations belong on a list with daycare centers, nursing homes, grocery stores, and restaurants? It's time to ensure that Tallahassee is even more purposeful in its development than originally outlined in the comprehensive plan and PUDs approved in 2011 before residents lived in proximity to developmental areas, directly impacted residents existed and could attend public hearings. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Dot Enman Johnson, then Stephen Dury.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Dot Enman Johnson, 2121 Trescott Drive. I am here in support of the Canopy Neighborhood's request to reconsider the siting of the Circle K gas station within 60 feet of residential homes. There are many incompatible impacts that can happen to residential neighborhoods, including the amount of impervious surface that could lead to flooding and stormwater problems. The, the neighborhood was aware of a site plan that included a town center. But there was no specificity when these people purchased their homes and moved in that one of the uses on that site would be a gas station and convenience store. I'm not here speaking against the developer. I knew Pepper Gas Vini, the late Pepper Gas Vini, for many years and was saddened at his passing. I considered him a friend, and he was a friend to this community, sponsoring the annual Thanksgiving dinner for people who had no one to share Thanksgiving with here in this city. And his family has made many contributions, both in the health and education area. And I respect and applaud that family. But I hope, even though the site plan has been approved, conditionally approved, that there is a way to work with the Gas Vini family and coming up with a plan that will move this incompatible use a little distance away from this neighborhood. The neighborhood has given you many reasons why that should be done. I ask for your consideration for those. Thank you.
Uh, our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Stephen Dury, and he'll be followed by Jim Mitchell.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Commissioners, Mayor Daley. My name is Steve Dury. I'm from 3844 Ardmore Lane, also in the Canopy subdivision. I do have a handout for the Commissioners and for you, Mr. Mayor. This highlights many of the points that have already been brought up this evening regarding our disapproval and, uh, and how upset we are with the idea of a Circle K being built in a residential community. It also has aerial views of where the Circle K is proposed to be built and all of the homes surrounding it. I believe that it's really a travesty that a developer, working along with the city, had carte blanche to sign a contract without any residential input. How did this happen? In our research and meeting with the developer, with a small group of residents, I asked the developer, "Did you have to sign this contract with the Circle K?" He didn't want to answer my question, but finally did because I asked him three times. And he said, "No, I didn't have to sign it, but the first one to come to the table that wanted to build in the community, and so I signed it." And so I said, "Well, why didn't it get disclosed to all of the people building homes?" And he said, "I had a nondisclosure agreement with Circle K." So therefore, his sales reps also did not disclose to all of us buying and building homes that a Circle K was going to be built in our neighborhood. How did this get through a process without community or neighbors' input? A type A site plan is what was used. Now, a type A site plan is typically not used for commercial projects of this nature, especially with environmental impacts that a gas station has. A type B site plan at least involves a public hearing. Type A site plan circumvents the public from even really understanding what's going on. As a neighborhood, we didn't know this was happening until we saw a variance sign on the lot. And the variance was for a sign variance for a Circle K. All of a sudden, we got notified because of that sign. So a type A site plan typically is reserved for small, low-impact developments, not a large 5,200-square-foot convenience store and eight gas pumps double-sided.
You're at 30 seconds.
That's an absolute travesty that that could be a type A site plan in the city of Tallahassee. Santa Rosa County has a 500-foot barrier between any gas station and any residence in Santa Rosa County in Florida, in Navarre. So we can learn from our neighbors that gas stations are dangerous and should not be in our neighborhoods. They should be well-thought-out, should be well-planned, and I urge you as a commission to open this up again, take a look at this, and I urge you to get community involvement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Our next speaker, please.
Jim Mitchell. Mayor and Commissioners, I will get those handouts that were provided to you. There are several different pieces. I want to be sure you all get a complete set.
Okay.
My name is Jim Mitchell. I live at 2424 Sweet Meadow Heights in the community of Canopy. I'm a retired United Methodist pastor, so I love a pulpit and I love a microphone. Canopy has a marketing phrase on its sign, "A community with deep roots." Let me tell you a little bit about my Mitchell family. We have deep roots in Florida, a longtime native family. About 175 years ago, the Mitchell family drove cattle down from Alabama and settled in the Tampa area. During that 19th century, my great-great uncle Henry Mitchell, he spent a lot of time up here in Tallahassee. He was a self-taught lawyer, served several sessions in the Florida House of Representatives. He was later appointed as Associate Justice of the Florida Supreme Court. He resigned several years later to run and be elected the 15th Governor of Florida in 1892. You can see his portrait in the Florida Supreme Court. You can see it in the Capitol Building. I love Florida. I love Tallahassee. My wife and I moved up to Tallahassee from Polk County to be close to our daughter and family up here. We selected a home under construction in Canopy in the spring of 2022. And we closed on the house on my birthday in November 2022. And since we bought the house on my birthday, somehow it seems appropriate. I am here today on my wedding anniversary. And my wife Nancy's at home and waiting for me to come home, and we can eat, have some dinner. I like Circle K. I have a Circle Rewards program. My granddaughters love to get cherry ice seeds from Circle K. I like Circle K, but not in my backyard. There's that old phrase, "Not in my backyard," and applies here. Uh, I, I am one of those houses that is within 50, 60, 100 feet. I am one of those houses that is within 50, 60, 100 feet, along with the Schuler's and others, who are basically Circle K would be in my backyard. Right now, we're across the street, Dempsey Mayo, from that site. The streetlights shine in our bedroom windows. That's okay. Circle K lights and noise would also be affected into our house because we are one of those few houses that are immediately close to the Circle K site.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
When we bought our house on my birthday back in 2022, as you have heard before, we were not aware that Circle K would be built so close to us. If we had heard that, we probably would not have built the house. We did not know about Circle K until the previous speaker said that there was a sign variance. A beautiful senior center that is being built by the city is going to be enhanced the area. A Circle K in a residence area, as you heard before, does not make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend, happy anniversary. Today is my wife's 50th birthday, so I feel your...
You said it.
I'm here.
You said the number?
Gave it away. Gave it away.
Please tell your wife happy anniversary.
You may need a reverend to come back since you've announced your wife's age.
Pray for him. Pray for him, Reverend.
She's proud. Not to make light of your comments, we hear you loud and clear as we hear everyone. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Delilah Pierre, then Casey Weiner.
After these two speakers, how many more do we have left?
These two and then one more.
Okay, excellent. Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Delilah. My address is exempt. I'm here to repeat the demands of restore the Citizens Police Review Board, no more money for the Tosi Police Department Headquarters, and justice and a retrial for Calvin Riley now. I think it's clear that in our city, people have a lot of complaints, and people are really upset about where funding allocation is going to. There are stories and allegations of multiple families being unable to recover from this hurricane, and yet we can funnel $135 million into our police department with no real budget or accountability for where that money is going. There are raises for things like that, or raises for city staff to making somewhere between $100,000 to $200,000, and yet our city can't do basic affordable housing, basic utility, moratoriums, can't do anything to help improve the lives of people who live here. And I think that is a significant problem in our community. There is an election, obviously, coming up in November, and I think for those sitting on the City Commission, especially those on the City Commission who are up for election, they should think deeply about whether they want to stay on the City Commission and how to do that. And I think the way to do that is conceding to the demands that people are giving here, actually listening to citizens, and that's more than a conversation after this meeting. That's making a substantial change on policy. That's doing things like making sure the Circle K doesn't show up in someone's neighborhood. That's doing things like more than just reaching out and talking to someone who's dealing with a hurricane, making sure that process is being alleviated. Because I've seen many people come to speak to you many, many, many times with little change happening. That same situation has happened with Calvin Riley and his family, who still haven't been given a retrial for their case. Y'all have power, and you should be using your power to improve the livelihood of our community. And I think it shows through your waning popularity, and I'm talking specifically to Mayor John Daley, Curtis Richardson, and Diane Williams-Cox, that people are upset with the way that you're running our city. People are upset with the way that you're running our city, and we know that is fact because a sitting city commissioner, an incumbent, is losing to someone who just started running against them. Not just started running against them, but an incumbent is losing. I think that...
You're at 30 seconds remaining.
For our Citizens Police Review Board in our city, it is essential for us to have a form of review for policing. I really like the initiative that was brought up by my knowledge by Jeremy Matlow and was voted on in favor with Jacqueline Porter, basically talking about how to help the Calvin Riley family. I hope initiatives like that get reintroduced. I hope to see less active police benevolent association and policing funding running our city, and I hope that we improve our budget to reflect the needs of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Casey Weiner, followed by Thomas Spears.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Casey Weiner, and my address is exempt. As a lifetime resident of the city of Tallahassee, I have witnessed years of police misconduct and malfeasance. I've lived through countless corrupt, bought-and-owned city governments quite like this one, who do nothing about it over and over and over again. The first glimpse of real change that I saw in my lifetime was when the Citizens Police Review Board was established post-2020, after George Floyd was executed for existing. The Citizens Police Review Board must be brought back to the city of Tallahassee as soon as humanly possible. Despite the limitations Florida House Bill 601 has created for a review board, Tampa and other cities haven't dismantled theirs across the state. They can operate in the confines of the new state law while still ensuring police accountability with the review board with real power. Further, police accountability doesn't start with an exorbitant new cop headquarters. Despite $145 million going into the project and likely more, TPD and the city have not clarified where this money is going, how long the construction will take, or much-needed specifics for the project. While ordinary families in Tallahassee struggle to pay rent, or buy food, or pay for medical treatment, or deal with the increasing dangerous weather as a result of climate change, TPD gets bailed out by the city again. Increasing the new TPD headquarters budget, equating to hundreds of millions of dollars all told, is a disgrace, particularly while giving firefighters a minuscule raise. The citizens of this city largely oppose these potential increases for TPD's budget, particularly for the headquarters, and we demand a public hearing on these proposed increases. No more money for TPD headquarters. To continue on the theme tonight of voicing concerns on issues that have festered for months while the commission has done exactly nothing, I'm going to add to the chorus of people demanding a retrial for Mr. Calvin Riley. This commission is thrilled to support a police department with zero accountability. This commission will gladly keep a racist cop, Kirsten Oliver, on the city's payroll, even though she sets a new standard for disgusting behavior and total and complete incompetence. She's a cop who doesn't know TPD's own policy, yet she can keep a job.
You're at 30 seconds remaining.
The police department that framed a Tallahassee citizen can get an increase in funding for their boondoggle headquarters, but Mr. Riley will be arrested by a white crooked cop and then convicted by an all-white jury and judge. Justice and a retrial for Calvin Riley now.
Our next speaker, please.
Thomas Spears is the next speaker and the last one that I have.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Thomas Spears. I live in 32303. First thing I want to say is the sharing of ideas section, to do that before this section of unengaged speakers really needs to stop because it can really feel like coming up to this microphone is kind of screaming into the void, and it's even more so when we can't say for sure, we don't know for sure, that we can't get some kind of response after we speak. I understand if you want to get the meeting done a little quicker, I can understand that, but why not do one before and one after these speakers? It's great that you can respond in between speakers as you finally try to get a response to them. They've been fighting for their home for months. I know I've seen them multiple times, and they've been out here for the Circle K, talking about the Circle K also for months. That's great, but the sharing of ideas is the point where we can know that that is coming. So I think it's important to have that after, after this unengaged speakers section. Now, I'm going to talk about the firefighters. At this morning's quasi-judicial meeting to resolve the dispute with the firefighters, everything went just as we all expected. The conservative members of the commission sided with giving nothing to the higher ranks of firefighters, despite the massive increases to cost of living since the union deliberations started last year. EGAC stands with the firefighters and supports their efforts to get a better, fairer deal in their three-year contract, a deal that they deserve. The meager raises to the lowest two ranks is not enough. It's been well-known over these deliberations that the lowest-two-ranks firefighters and engineers have been taking on multiple jobs just to make ends meet. They have to go out and fight fires and save lives and then go home and do Uber afterwards? That's shameful. Everyone deserves a living wage, and that includes firefighters. At the meeting this morning, the council for the city said that the magistrate's recommendations were influenced by the market. The market does not put out fires, the firefighters do. The market does not have families to feed, the firefighters do. The market is not understaffed by 21 firefighters as of July 15th. Only the IAFF 2339 is. The people of Tallahassee are not fools. Mr. Mayor, at the City Commission meeting on April 24th, when you confronted Commissioner Matlow about his social media posts, you said the residents of Tallahassee see this for what it is, and you were absolutely right. The people do see this for what it is. They've spoken on social media, they've spoken at this microphone, and they've spoken at the ballot box. Commissioner Porter stood in support of the firefighters resolutely the entire time, and she won her reelection handily. Commissioner Richardson sided with the city, and he has to still continue his fight to be reelected in November, and it potentially has the very easy chance of losing that. Same election result may happen to you, Mr. Mayor, and to you, Commissioner Williams-Cox. Everyone should have a living wage, and that applies for the firefighters as well. Mr. Williams-Cox and Mayor Daley, you should take the lesson of this primary election very seriously and consider that with your approach to the three-year contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
No further speakers, Mayor.
All right. So, Mr. Reddick, we'll ask you to come up in just a second. We do need to... We've had several speakers over the time come and speak to Mr. Calvin Riley's case. Madam Attorney, will you please give us a quick overview on jurisdictions and what role the city of Tallahassee has to play now that Mr. Riley has had a trial, has been convicted? I believe he appealed, the appeal was denied. What role does the city have versus taking the case to the judiciary? And we're not going to have this from the crowd. We're not going to do it back and forth. We listen to everybody. We listen to everybody. We're asking for some clarification to make sure that we all understand we're on the same page. So, Madam Attorney...
The city really doesn't have...
I'm going to ask you one more time. Please be respectful. We said we listened. We need to get to the bottom of this, okay? Thank you. Madam Attorney.
The city really doesn't have any authority to do, to order or request a retrial in a criminal case. That's the jurisdiction of the criminal justice system at this point.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Mr. Reddick? Okay, I got a lot of questions, and I'm sure my colleagues have some questions about the issue that we're dealing with, with the Circle K. Walk us through why we are where we are right now and the role that the commission is playing.
Okay, so in 2021 is when there was a planning unit development amendment that came through, requesting a number of changes to the Canopy PUD. One of those included changing or adding uses, which included a gas station as one of those uses. And at that time, that is when that would have gone for the Planning Commission and the City Commission for consideration. And there were a number of details beyond just uses that were involved in that application. At that time, what that's really reviewed for by both Planning Commission and the City Commission is consistency with the comprehensive plan. And in the case of all Waloney-related properties such as Canopy, there's actually specific sections, a critical area plan that outlines specific guidelines to follow in shaping these planning unit developments and any further requests that have come before you for consideration to shape how that's developed. Since that time, and that was approved, that request was approved, then essentially what that does is set forward any further development to just comply with our land development regulations and the regulations set out in the PUD specifically. So in the case of the property with the Circle K being proposed, they submitted for a site plan application late last year, which is our first step in permitting process. As you've heard tonight, it received conditional approval, indicating they still have several specific requirements they need to meet before we would allow them to move to the next step in permitting.
What specifically are those conditions? Mr. Reddick, do you know off the top of your head? I know I'm calling you out right now, and I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, it ranged from things as significant as building location on the lot to things like utility connection details. It could be circulation for vehicles on site. It spans, there are about eight different departments that review and weigh in on the applications.
Buffer, lighting.
Yes, that's correct. So they do have, the PUD itself had specific buffer requirements there, but there are stringent lighting standards that we have in place for any commercial use that's adjacent to residential uses to limit that nuisance of light pollution. That would be required in this case. So there's still a long list of things that we have not seen addressed yet. It's on them to provide that back to us. Unfortunately, I don't have an update since we last met with the neighbors, and that's just a lack of communication from the applicant on their intent to move forward, no sort of resubmittals to address those remaining conditions. So at this time, where it's at is, there would not be a step that brings us back before the commission for consideration. This is at a staff level at this point for them to attempt to meet all of our land development regulations. If they can't meet that, then the project is not eligible to move forward. If they do, then just like any other commercial project, they'd be eligible to proceed in the permitting process.
How far away are they from turning dirt?
They still have two major, they have not applied for what we would consider really a construction permit. The site plan is really your 10,000-foot view. The next would be your real detail, the environmental management permit, where you're having much more detailed simile engineering work done, and that is the first permit where you're even allowed to start turning dirt, and they have not begun that process. And we wouldn't allow them to be issued anything of that nature until they pass the site plan process.
Yeah, and John... Just a second, hold on just a second. Who owns the dirt? Is it Premier or is it Circle K?
It is Premier who owns it.
Premier owns the dirt. Circle K wants to lease the dirt to build on top.
So, yes, sir. And that's typical of applicants. They typically want to get past a certain, I don't know the intent of who would own it ultimately, but typically they want to get past a certain point in permitting before they're acquiring a property to have some level of insurance.
Who has applied for the permit, Circle K or Premier?
Circle K. Their representatives.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, I remembered from our meeting, John, and I thought there was a avenue forward to address this at the state level, that there was some review that the state had to do, and it depended on whether or not...
The state, yes, Commissioner, I think what you're referring to, which a lot of the valid environmental concerns have been expressed and we've heard previously as well, is those are a lot of things that are actually managed and regulated at the state level rather than locally. So they have separate permitting, especially for noxious uses like gas stations, or say tank, storage tanks and the monitoring of those and the placement of those. That is all regulated at the state level, and so those have to be in place before they're allowed to begin construction as well. So there is a separate major state component that goes with those types of uses that is not involved with us locally.
And is it at that point in the process that it's being reviewed by the state?
To be honest with you, Commissioner, I've not heard if they're representatives have begun that process or not.
Are all the Circle K's owned separately, or are they owned by one person? It's a franchise, right? So like I can go and buy a Circle K, or is it all corporately owned out of Canada?
I would say it's more of a corporate structure, is how we see them come in for gas stations in general.
You have one owner that owns all the Circle K's in Tallahassee?
Wouldn't be able to answer that for sure.
Understood, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, John. You're answering a question. I am not aware of the environmental concerns with the other Circle K's, and we need to look into that immediately. And if they're all owned by the same person, I would say that that might be a conditional approval as well. You've got to clean up your act at the other Circle K's before you can move forward in the process. On top of that, I am also concerned, and it's interesting because in the 18 years that I have served, I have never seen an issue quite like this where, and it is true, you have not done anything wrong, neither our staff, neither is the Planning Commission, but one of the pre-approved uses of the PUD, one of the 45, is a gas station. And I mean, just common sense. And I'm new to this ballgame, folks. I'm coming to this late. But yeah, I mean, if I was buying a house and I was promised a town center, I'm thinking even Southwood. Well, yeah, you might have some parking, but you've got shops, you've got restaurants, it's walkable, the whole nine yards, not necessarily a Circle K that's right there as well. My question is, and this is, you're not going to be able to answer this right now, but I would love to see if there is any opportunity to have some discussions to see if we can possibly come up with some other mutually beneficial opportunity between Circle K and Canopy and the residents that... other mutually beneficial opportunity between Circle K and Canopy and the residents that does not include a 60-foot buffer behind somebody's backyard, and even with the technology that we have with lighting today. I mean, I've got a neighborhood and not a single person's in favor of this. I mean, you've got hundreds of people that have signed a petition saying this is a horrible idea. And so, I don't know. I mean, are we too... And I'm struggling because we have no formal role in this either. I mean, it would be more like reaching out in good faith of, hey, can we bring the parties together and figure this out?
Right. Right. That... Mr. Mayor, that's where I was thinking. Being a former member of the Planning Commission, when that came... Items like this has come before, and the neighbors came to those Planning Commission meetings and expressed their concerns about this, that's where we went, to get the neighbors and the developer or whomever to try to come to meet and have some conversation about what could be done and what couldn't be done. But the problem is what you said earlier. If it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's almost really nothing you can really do about it because it is a permissible use. It is consistent with the comp plan. And so, it's almost, you know, against the law to do anything other than trying to work together as neighbors and the developer to create some goodwill, to try to do the right thing that's going to help environmentally and with the social interactions and all these kinds of things that are happening and would be happening in the neighborhood. I would not want a gas station in my backyard. I certainly would not. And I would be doing just what they're doing, making sure you knew, you know, whoever needed to know, knew that. So, is there any... And I don't know... You may not be able to answer this question. Somebody in the neighborhood may be able to answer this question. Has there been any conversation with the neighborhood and the developer?
But no, sir. Just give us the opportunity required. Commissioner Williams Cox, yes, there has. There has, but to no resolution, and otherwise, we obviously wouldn't have the entire neighborhood or Representatives of the neighborhood out tonight upset about this.
Okay. Well, you know, I didn't want to assume anything. That's why I'm asking.
Got you. Mayor Protim.
Yeah, and I think, John, correct me if I'm wrong. I think that was one of the things that came out of our meeting with the neighborhood. One of the next steps was to try to meet with either the landowner or the corporation.
I recall that as well, and perhaps it has transpired since that meeting.
Because, I mean, all of us certainly are concerned, and that's why I did the meeting as quickly as I possibly could because of the concerns that the neighbors had expressed. And I understand, I wouldn't want that near where I live. You know, we raised hell about an apartment complex being built next to our neighborhood when my wife and I had just built our home there. And so, and I was concerned about the impact that that would have on our neighborhood, let alone a gas station. And so, it's just frustrating to think that there's nothing that we as a commission or as a city at this point can do about having it not built or moved somewhere else. John, is that in fact the case at this point?
That is the case. It would need to be some voluntary efforts engaging with the property owner.
No legal action?
Not that I'm aware of, and I will look to the city attorney for that.
Okay. John, Mr. Reddick, excuse me. And maybe this kicks up the Mr. Manager. I'll be looking for some guidance. Again, I would like to have a formal review of this DEP contamination site map or remedial map or work needs to be done map that identifies the Circle Ks in this community. I consider that a very strong conditional approval, that even though it's not related to a particular site, it is the same corporation. If we have a pattern and history of environmental damage that needs to be dealt with, I'm very hesitant to move forward with any particular one new site until they clean up their act. Okay? Number two, would love to reach out to the property owners and Circle K to sit down. And with your expertise, what... Unless I see you up and moving around, if you have any comment as well, that would be great. But I think you understand what I'm talking about. Okay. Number two, is there any wiggle room? What does the entire PUD look like? What are the other things that they are proposing out there? What are we requiring them to set aside as green space? Where is that green space located? Is there ways to redesign the PUD that still... And I know it's time on their end, but still meets the goals and objectives of the property owner, which I am also very well aware of property rights, but at the same time, meets the interests and the needs of the neighborhood. Number three, separate, I do and I will at the end of this make a motion that the city initiate through the comprehensive plan amendment process this fall, a full review with our colleagues at the county of all permitted uses under the PUD Site A and B process. It's time for us to take a look.
I would second that, Mr. Mayor.
Why this particular use is just a blanket approval? And the answer at the end of that process might be, yes, and it's legit, and this is why. But we need to have... I think it's time. I was just talking to the manager. I think it's time that we have that complete review as well. So, let me see if I can wrap up my ramble and give my colleagues an opportunity to comment as well. I'm interested in knowing exactly, do we have other concerns at Circle Ks around Tallahassee that have been documented by DEP? If so, what are the steps of remediation that are taking place to clean that up? Does that allow us to come into play during the permitting process of this PUD, specifically of this Circle K? Can we pull Circle K and representatives of the neighborhood and Premier, and I would be more than happy to, as well as Mayor, to engage, to see if we can come up creatively with other ideas to find a solution? I want to know exactly also, what are the buffers? What are the barriers? What are the lighting? What is the environmental remediation plan on site? What is ingress? What is the transportation pattern look like? I think we need to really engage. It might not come to a vote. I might not have a formal say, but I am really interested to know what's going on. At the last meeting, when the neighborhood came to testify, I heard them out. I didn't engage that night because I thought that was at the beginning of the process and that this would all be taken care of. Here we are at the end of summer, and it has not happened. So, I think it's time for us to engage.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you hearing me out, John. I caught you flat-footed, but this is something that we need to address.
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor? Let's go down the line. First, I haven't heard from Commissioner Matlow or Commissioner Porter on this, and we'll come back to the Mayor Protim and Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree largely. I like to work together to figure out how we don't put a Circle K on this location. I think, you know, Canopy was heralded as a master plan community, and I don't think it was ever master planned for this to be a gas station. We talked about the change in 2021. Now, there's a variance for a sign. Eventually, you make so many changes, it's not really planned at all. I don't think anybody ever planned, when they built their homes, that there'd be gas pumps facing their homes. I understand the limitations of the approval, but I would say what I'm looking for is to ask Premier to be good corporate citizens. You know, we work with the Gazvenes, whether it's realigning Veldedary to Oxbottom, to come to mutually beneficial agreements for their developments and for the public good. I think what we heard loud and clear from the community today is like, there's no public good on this project at all. It's a single gas station. It's not the end of the world for anybody, except maybe the people who have it directly in their backyards. And we've seen Circle Ks around the community become public nuisances with pop-up parties, and I would be terrified that that could end up in my backyard. So, with that, I understand the Mayor's comments and what he's looking for, but I do think, you know, I strongly feel like we should pull everybody together to see how we can just get voluntary compliance, to see if they can reframe this. You know, it was their development. They told people it was going to be a town center. They got people to buy in, buy property, build houses, and people are having the carpet pulled out from underneath them. And then, well, they're probably... Could they even leave without their property values decreasing once there's a gas station there? So, there's just so many outgoing concerns. And I do think, looking forward-thinking, you know, how we can prevent these types of things happening in the future, and then how we can get creative and just bring all the parties together to have this not be built, not a gas station with pumps facing people's backyards. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, the full review of the comprehensive plan amendment, proposed text amendment of what is approved uses to blanket PUD permitting would address that for future. Unfortunately, we're in a bit of a pickle, and I know they understand this because legally, we do not have a formal vote in this as a commission. So, you're absolutely correct, Commissioner Matlow. It's using diplomacy. It's using leverage. It's identifying how we can negotiate through the process, but let's all try to do it in the good spirit, business owners, community leaders, neighborhoods, and that's the ultimate goal. Commissioner Porter, you want to weigh in, or are you good?
Just one question. I agree with everything that's been said. So, can you clarify for me why only a Type A site plan review was necessary?
Sure. And that in general applies to any commercial or multifamily development that is compliant with code. They're not requesting any sort of alternative special relief, I'll say, or variance of any sort. So, we do, whether it's a gas station or a Starbucks, or had large student, you know, student housing, multifamily developments that are Type A, it's essentially our process to say, historically for the city, to say, if you're signing up to meet all the requirements that we are putting on this piece of property, then it is essentially an expedited process.
Although the drive-through of some of the other establishments that were mentioned have become so popular, I don't think that's going to help the traffic pattern either out there. So, I mean, but I think we're all on the same page. We understand what we're talking about, the impact to the neighborhood. On point, Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Mayor Protim. So, could the site plan review process be amended to include a citizen input in the site?
It's got notification.
Yes, and that's a... If you're asking in general of our process, that's a land development regulate... It's in our code, so that would be an ordinance process to do that.
Okay. I think, Mr. Mayor, that's something we should look at as well.
Absolutely.
Because I think there should be input from, I mean, especially in a situation like this, where people's lives and livelihoods and families and properties are going to be negatively impacted, they should know and have some input into that.
Well, and John, that's also... I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's...
No, and Curtis is right. Commissioner Rich, Mayor Protim is right. You know, it's a common sense approach. And again, y'all doing an amazing job.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not knocking y'all at all. I'm not knocking anybody in the process. But it's time to review like notification, because number one, we have different ways to notify, electronic along with paper. But it's also, look, if notification is required within 1,000 feet of the proposed development, but then you got a 200-house neighborhood, it's common sense that you let the neighborhood know what's going on, even though legally, to meet the test, you only have to do 1,000 feet, right? So, I do think it's time that, again, with our colleagues over at the county commission, we look at the notification requirement. And quite frankly, that should be the financial burden of the applicant. If I'm going to build a huge commercial building, then I should bear the financial cost of notifying, whatever that cost may be, right? It's like public records request. If I request all these documents, I'm supposed to pay for them, technically speaking. It should be the same. But I think, again, and when my colleagues are done, looking for you to help me with the motion of bringing back two items. Number one is to formally kick off the text amendment process for the comprehensive plan to do a full review of allowed permitted uses under a PUD Site A review, okay? And then, number two, you know, bring back an agenda item of what are the municipal requirements for notification when going through this process? Actually, yeah, when going through this process. Am I making sense?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I think the last one's going to be tougher, John. I think that's what he was describing, is the notification process in a Type A, since there is no ability for the commission to change the outcome because it's straightforward and it's allowed by our land use code, that's why it doesn't exist. I think that question broadens, and it says that you would have to interject some ability for the commission to change the outcome. You'd have to give some authority to deny the site plan. So, I think it's a bigger, which we're totally equipped to do, but I think it's a bigger question than just the notification, because notification with the inability to change doesn't really work.
Right.
You know, I mean, that's information, but you can't act upon it.
Right.
So, I think that's what John's point is. If the owner of the land can proceed with certain uses, and as long as they comply fully with those requirements, that's a Type A, right? So, I think what we're talking about is changing the format, which we can totally review, but it's bigger than just a notification. John, do you agree?
I do agree. To the manager's point, it's, say, to notice even for a Type A is really more of just an informing rather than a providing opportunity.
Yeah, because they saw the sign, and that's how they knew that something was going to happen, but there was...
John, I hear you, and I completely agree, and I completely understand what you're saying. There is a difference between informing, hey, I got approval by law, this is what I'm going to do. They still should be able to know that, okay? And number two, where you do have citizen input formally in the process, not the Type A review, definitely, or we definitely should be paying attention to notification, taking into consideration 21st century technology of how we can notify, and what are the boundaries of notification, and adding in more of a common sense approach. And I know you hear me loud and clear. I also know that you all do do a great job going above and beyond with notification. That is not lost on me. I'm just saying, maybe we should notify. And if it means an amendment to the LDR and making that through the process, so be it. But let's begin that process, and I think that first step is bringing back an agenda for review. Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you. You know, I'm over 50, so I'm having to try to remember what I was going to say.
Thank you.
So, I want to make sure that we don't key in on Circle K, because if Circle K abandons and somebody else comes, then, you know, we want to make sure that this, whatever this function is at Circle K, whether it's Circle K or Circle Q or whoever, we don't... We want to make sure that this applies to whomever, so we don't need to be specific to Circle K. And if there are any other gas stations that are environmentally causing harm, we need to know that also, not just in that area, but wherever it is occurring. Because I heard a list of places tonight where there's cleanup sites going on. So, we want to know that. I also want to know kind of the timeline, because we need to assure them that this is not going to move forward tomorrow. So, I don't know what the timeline is for what was planned to do this development, to bring this Circle K in, but are we talking about... I know you say that they have a clear... They have two more hurdles to clear. We talk about one year from now, two years from now, five years from now? However long that is, we need to know that so that they can be assured that nothing's going to happen in the next 30 days, which will give us time to do what we need to do as far as, you know, a text amendment or what have you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams Cox, something the manager weighed in on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might offer, and John, you correct me if you don't believe this is possible, I think we should reach out to the representative of the applicant. Again, I don't think we believe they're the landowner at this point, which is very typical. So, Circle K would be the applicant. They'd be looking for site plan approval. They're trying to validate the ability to use it, meet all the conditions. It's been 10 months. I'll be honest with you, I think that speaks volumes. I think we could reach out to at least the representative and ask the intentions of the applicant if they intend to proceed. I mean, this can't move that fast because they're still in the site plan process, but, John, would that be appropriate for us to be able to at least deal with our representative?
Absolutely.
And ask their intent? They may very well not be intending to proceed and may be willing to disclose that to us.
And I can appreciate that, but guess what? I bet most of the folks who talked to us tonight don't know what the site plan process is. But what we need to make sure that they know is that nothing's going to happen right now and that we have time to get with the representative, get with the developer, get with whomever we need to get with, to get, to try to get some dialogue and get some understanding and conversation. That's what I... That was my point, that nothing's going to happen within the next 30 days while we try to figure out where we're going next and how to do what we need to do, because we can't even look... because we can't even look at the comp plan until, you know, we say later this fall. So, meantime, back at the ranch, we want to make sure nothing's happening.
That's a long-term fix.
Well, I know, I understand, but what we, if I'm sitting in the audience, what I hear tonight is, the commission does not have the authority to stop this. But they're willing to have some conversations with some folks to try to slow it down while we get, while we wrap our arms around what can and cannot happen, and assure the neighbors that we're going, you know, that we're on board to try to help keep them safe and work with the parties involved to try to do something, do what we can do to try to hold this off.
Understood, Commissioner, and I would say to that point, certainly not in the next 30 days, knowing the amount of the permitting they have ahead of them, I would say if they picked up tomorrow and started going full, they'd still have, you know, a few months before they would really even get to the point of turning dirt. There is a time.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's incumbent upon us as a city, on behalf of our residents and this corporate giant that we're talking about, is to champion their cause in that meeting. To let them know, I don't know if any, if you all have had an opportunity to meet with a representative from Circle K and, okay. And so, when that meeting happens, then, I think we ought to champion their cause as a city on behalf of its residents, and let them know that, you know, what the concerns are, and try to impress upon them as good corporate citizens that this not happen based on what we've heard from the neighbors and the neighborhoods that will be impacted.
John, what is the buffer currently required? We're here in 60 feet between houses and the gas station.
There's two separate, there's a buffer that is, was part of the plat that runs between the back of lots and this commercial lot. We do have additional basically buffering that would be required to enhance that. I couldn't give you a specific number on that of what that actually is, but it would be closer to the probably 40, 45-foot range when you add the two together, of actual, where we'd require a landscape plan between that versus just a separation. I think there's a combination of what you're hearing in terms of distance between sites versus what an actual, like, regulated buffer would be, if that makes sense, or require a maintained landscape.
Mayor Pro Tem, will you take the lead on this meeting between the neighborhood and?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And, yeah, because I wanted to make sure that that part of the conversation is had. So, I'd be more than happy to take the lead on that. Since, you know, we did the initial meeting, I'd be more than happy to work with the neighborhood and with John and make sure we bring that meeting together and get these issues aired and addressed.
Okay, so, let me bring this in for, any other comments? We bring this in for landing for the neighborhood, okay? What I think you're hearing is unanimous support, that we're all on the same page.
Sure.
I hope you recognize that by law, we do not have a formal vote on this, okay? What we are asking is for Mayor Pro Tem to take the lead, along with senior staff. Pull together the interested parties, including representatives from the neighborhood, to bring in representatives from the applicant, applicant being Circle K, and the property owners themselves, to see if we can come up with some other creative solutions for the development of the town center that I think everyone bought into when we moved out there. And I have full faith and confidence that we'll be able to come to some resolution. We'd be very clear, it was mentioned tonight that this commission should take action to reverse this moving forward. And I think it's very important so that we manage expectations that this board does not have a legal opportunity to do so. When that was brought up during testimony, let's understand, that's not a position that we can take. Managing outcomes here of what the expectations are. But we hear you loud and clear, and we'll roll up our sleeves and see what we can do, okay? It's been a great night. Thanks, John, appreciate it. It's been a great night, we've had a great meeting from this morning until now. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.